Chris, you're not muted. I don't know if you're supposed to be.
I can turn it off.
I think going higher.
Yay! Shows us not to use the TVs in- oh, I guess we shouldn't use the TVs anymore. All right, sorry about that, everybody. It seems we've got our technology issues. It's all for now. We'll see what next week, right? All right, welcome, everybody. A little late to our Tuesday, May 18th, City Council Workshop. I hate to say I'm gonna do a sound check. We all just wanna make sure everybody can hear everybody else. So, Councilmember Kurt?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reivers?
Present.
Do I still hear an echo? No. Okay, good enough. All right, so, all right, so tonight we are jumping back into our- Ritz-
You finished the roll call? Is that what we're doing? Oh, okay. Gotcha.
We still have an echo. Hold on. I was just gonna sound check to start, Mike. Okay, let's try this again. I think we're okay for now. I won't promise anything. All right, so now we've got the sound check. I'll do a quick roll call. Just so we can get started. That's Councilmember Woodruff.
Present.
Councilmember Follier.
Here.
Councilmember Langford.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
There.
Councilmember Reivers and Councilmember Kurt's already checked in. Councilmember Dunn is out of town with family. Tried to get the technology to work, but it wasn't cooperating. So, during regular meeting, we will take a motion to excuse him. All right, so far so good on the audio. So, we're gonna do- jump back into reviewing Resolution 12-156, which will become Resolution F, which is the City Council Rules of Procedure. We made it through the end of Section 2 last meeting. So, my thought was, before we jump back in to review the red lines that were done from last week, if we can maybe start at Section 3, get through with everybody's comments, and then we can kinda go from there. Is everybody amenable to that? All right, yes. Section 3 starts on page 5. So, yeah, looks like you've got it there. Todd, thank you very much for putting that up there for everybody. So, this one, the Section 3 is pretty short. It goes over the chair- which the chairs and duties. I didn't personally see anything that really needed to be changed here. I didn't know if there's any input from anybody else on Sections 3.1 to 3.6. All right. I guess hearing none, we can move on to Section 4.
Oh, 3.5.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Sure, substitution for chair. The chair may call upon the mayor pro tem or any other member to temporarily chair the meeting.
I'd just like to remove the word "temporarily."
Okay. Now, so I believe, but it is Sean. I don't know if Sean's on. There might be something we want to run by him. So, Councilmember Langford, I don't know if that may be geared for- like, I remember at one meeting, my battery went dead, so I asked Mayor Pro Tem to jump in while I got it fixed. I don't know if that's what that's for, but you mind if we clarify that? And then-
No, I just think that the chair has authority to have anybody influence from this.
Oh, right.
From that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll make that note. And then, we have any other questions or comments on Section 3? Okay. Section 4, Council Order of Business and Agenda. We've kinda- this has kinda morphed over the years. And this basically dictates the order in which our agenda flows. We're currently doing everything that is on here with the exception of some- I've got heads and notes on Mr. Boerker's to the reports and the consent agenda section, but I'll defer to the rest of the council if they have anything. Anything to bring up with regards to Section 4?
I do-
4.1 to start. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Under 4.1, the last and down agenda approval, we have the mayor shall seek approval of the agenda. Council members through motion, majority vote, may add, delete, or other. In the past, that's solely morphed into mayor or mayor pro tem.
Oh, shall seek. Okay.
Where's that at?
Under agenda approval.
Agenda approval, the very last one.
So, it says, "The mayor shall seek approval of the agenda. Council members through motion and majority vote may add, delete, or defer agenda items." So, to me, that's showing that council members would make the motion.
Todd, can we see the rest of that, please?
That was it. That's actually it. Oh, it's scrolled up, sorry.
Yeah, my recommendation is to put mayor or mayor pro tem, because that's what we've been doing in our meetings for quite a while now.
So, just change the first section to mayor or mayor pro tem?
Mayor comma, mayor, excuse me, mayor or mayor pro tem. My recommendation.
Any questions or concerns with that?
Should we change it to the chair?
Because that would cover whichever one.
Yeah. That would cover mayor, mayor pro tem, or-
Whoever else is-
Temporarily elected individual.
I have no challenge with that. Is it the only chair is different since this has been written this way for a long time, but it's just evolved to whoever's mayor pro tem has been doing all of that. So, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Whoever the chair is, the chair of the meeting, yeah, that's not a problem.
Which then goes back to the definition of 3.1 that we have. Okay, I've got that noted. So, page 6, we have several other sections. Does anybody want to bring any questions or suggested changes? We had Councilmember Follier first, then Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you can get your mic closer, because the audience may not be able to-
Can everybody hear me?
It's not us. It's-
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I might wanna pull it closer.
Okay.
Okay.
Under workshop discussions, I'm looking to maybe address that final sentence where it says final action is neither expected nor anticipated on workshop topics. I would almost propose that we just strike it completely.
Well, typically, the action is sent in an ordinance or resolution later on in the meeting or another meeting.
Well, I think we've already established that we can take action in workshop discussions. So, why would we keep the sentence?
Looking for input from the rest of the council.
Yeah, I'd agree with them.
False, mayor pro tem, then councilmember receivers, then councilmember Kurt.
I don't have a challenge with eliminating that, because we just covered it 2.4. 2.4 does address who else will be there. Talk about meetings or during the workshop, so if anything, we would have to- I recommend we have to change that, but I think eliminate that would certainly work also.
Okay, and we had Councilmember Reivers?
Yep, just agree with Councilmember Follier.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kurt?
Just the same, I agree with Councilmember Follier that if we're able to take action, then let's strike that saying that we won't take action.
Okay, right, then Councilmember Woodruff?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Follier. I think we can just eliminate that sentence.
All right. Sounds good. We will make that note.
Well, it's just still my turn, but I can wait.
All right, so if it's okay, I'll jump back up to- just so we can take each section at a time. So, citizen comments, we've already- it actually refers to 8.2 and 8.3, which is later on. So, really, I don't see anything changing in this case. We just have to look at the reference sections of 8.2 and 8.3. Then we have the announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. The mayor makes announcements of upcoming meetings and events including proclamations. The proclamation is an official declaration made by either the city council or the mayor. Special presentations will be scheduled at this time. Any suggested changes?
Where are we on? Are we on 6?
Page 6, the second section. Now, we're just taking each section at a time. Announcements, proclamations, and special presentations.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Follier?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. I just have a comment on that. Something that I've noticed happened at our council meetings from time to time is, as we go through our agenda, when we have recognition of somebody, or my example I have here is when we've had the Winter Glow folks come to tell us about what they're gonna do in the cost and all that stuff, they almost sit through at least half of our agenda. I'm just wondering, is that somewhere where we bring up those people to the front of the agenda, so we're not making them wait?
That's where they should be, and we'll take more care of it.
Put that in here, any verbiage to that, or-
I think it's more of a-
Just a comment. You know what? That's a great suggestion. What we can do is ask the council to amend the agenda to move them up, so that they don't have to wait for the whole meeting to get to their front.
Well, we should just make sure we schedule it properly from the beginning. If we miss it, then we'll make sure we can do that. But the announcements and such comes right after the first citizen comment, so we'll just make sure that going forward that we have that in that section.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else on that section, we'll go to reports. Mayor and councilmembers report on council committees, other meetings and activities in which they have participated. Reports may be presented to council by other agencies and city staff. I had a note here about, you know, other departments and other commissions, but it's- the departments are already on there with regards to city staff, but we do have reports from other commissions in that section. So, I think we should be pertinent to add that. Would anybody have any objections adding other commissions to that section? Such as- and I would consider Friends of the Library a part of that as well. The Friends of the Library, planning commission, salary commission, any of those. Okay, hearing no objections? We talked about workshop discussions. Are there any other comments on that section?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
So, sometimes we struggle with what's the difference between a workshop and a special presentation? So, I don't wanna drive the direction it goes, but I wanna share with the council our criteria, and if we're wrong, then we need to change it. But we always think of workshops as very interactive, so that, okay, let's talk about Project A, and let's talk about getting counsel feedback, let's get the input and have a discussion. Presentations tend to be more like GSI or business bookends, and even though there's maybe a question or two, but it's not an engaged workshop. That's the criteria that we use, and is that okay?
That works for me. How about everybody else? Okay, Councilmember Reivers?
Just to go back to your reports and adding outside agencies, should we consider setting outside agencies at the invitation of council or something like that? What I'm- my rationale and my concern is, if somebody is a nonprofit, if they all of a sudden want to use this as a stage to come in and speak as long as they want during one of our meetings, it's never happened, it's never been an issue, but if we throw it on there and make it part of our policy, should we say, at the invitation of council?
My thought would be, if it's a nonprofit not associated with the city business, that it would be under special presentations. And then, you know, like I was saying, the salary commission, planning commission, and the youth commission would be under reports. Kinda how I'm thinking of it. Councilmember Woodruff?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as Friends of the Library, I really go with it should go in this part. As you said, I love Friends of the Library. I know when I was president, I would just use it as a comment at the time, but we also have the trustee who is on, who also can report on things for Friends of the Library as well. So, I think those would be the two more proper venues for something like Friends of the Library. And that, as Councilmember Reivers pointed out, we don't get into this well. You know, the Friends is a nonprofit. They are allowed to do this. Citizen comments, I feel we can always do that. And then, I think Tim Olson is the trustee, who is the council leader right now. And we have the library trustee that's also leading on to the Friends. So, I think between the two of them, they could probably report, and the current president could also do that.
Gotcha, and I don't think it's important to list them, just kinda know whatever.
Right, I just, since you mentioned Friends of the Library, I wanted to-
Well, I always used to sit there and listen to you and think, well, you know, we really should, because it's really city-related to have you during that section, but no, point taken. Anybody else have any comments on that?
Mayor, here's a question. When people from the outside wanna make a presentation, we generally, as a guiding principle, ask that the presentation be no more than 10 minutes with five minutes for Q and A. And it's about meeting management. You guys have all sent through some presentations that have taken up the better part of-
Oh, yeah.
An hour. So, long story short, do you wanna put some guiding principles in here on duration?
Yes.
Or, okay, thank you.
The 15 minutes max for the presentation plus five for Q and A?
Well, we usually do 10-minute presentation, five-minute Q and A.
That's what I was recommending.
Yeah, that's what I meant. It didn't come out right. Thank you. Okay, all right, I guess we'll move next to consent agenda. A little bit longer, the mayor identifies the items on the consent agenda and requests a motion with a second for approval. I think we can go back to that, because I know mayor pro tem usually moves that. I don't know if we wanna change that to mayor or mayor pro tem?
Yeah.
That's typically over the years how that's gone.
Has evolved into that.
The consent agenda contains items which are of a routine and non-commercial nature, which may include, but are not limited to, the following: meeting minutes, payroll, and claims. Any item on the consent agenda may, at the request of the council member, be removed and considered separately. So, years ago-
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Reivers.
Back to consent agenda, and frankly, for any one of these lines, I'll just go back for sake of consistency, just stating the chair rather than the mayor, the chair of the meeting.
Well, this one is a little bit different, because historically, it's been the mayor pro tem who has moved the consent agenda and done the motion.
Sure. But I'm thinking too, on public hearing appeals, the mayor will state reports. You know, I'm just thinking, if we wanna swap out mayor for chair, just about anywhere in the document, just for sake of consistency. I agree with you on the consent agenda, the mayor pro tem identifies the items. I don't mean to be a stickler on it. It's always worked fine, but just for sake of consistency in the document.
Yes. Point taken. And we'll go back to the other items that we have talked about in prior meeting and check that as well. Mayor pro tem?
I just feel it's- I pretty much agree, but I just feel it's have- we have verbiage to back up what we do now.
Right, exactly. Okay, so we'll leave consent agenda, mayor or mayor pro tem. And then, on the consent agenda, so, well, when I first found the council, consent agenda was split. It was general business, and then we had under that consent agenda, which were the routine items, the minutes, the invoices, and such like that. And then we had Section B, which were items that were for action but may have discussion. We kinda got away from that. I'm not quite sure when, and recently, we've added that back sort of unofficially. I kinda like some input from the council on how they think that's working, instead of hoping everything under the consent agenda, because we kinda got away from, you know, the items of non-controversial nature and that won't have discussion being in the consent agenda, which really wasn't the right way to manage it. First question is with Councilmember Woodruff.
Thank you, Mayor. I like the idea of the separate action items, but you can clarify, it's not what your council would all talk also for the public. It might be viewing or hopefully someday attending again in person. I like that separation, so, yeah, we know these items are gonna go quickly without discussion. These items might not go as well as you would've found out someone would have it. So, I like that idea. We should stick with that and put that in here.
Great, thank you. I think I had- okay, I see a thumbs up from Councilmember Reivers. Mayor pro tem, then the mayor- Councilmember Langford, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. For clarification, that Holly recommended that we should keep the action items as individually and collectively do what we've done the last three meetings to have consent agenda all done in one? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. However we've been doing it the last few meetings, I like that. I think that really-
All right.
It just clarifies things. It makes it easier to follow, again, for citizens in particular to not get to figure out what each of those things are in, and having those action items separate, so that those citizens know, and we know, that these might be items that we wanna discuss.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Councilmember Langford?
Yeah, my only comment is that the consent agenda should be moved as one.
Right.
Yeah.
So, if we have 10, 12 items under the consent agenda, there's no necessity for us to be reading each one individually.
Yeah.
All right, even if you hold the vote until afterwards. So, the idea is to move along the agenda when we have a consent. Just simply ask, anybody have any questions on consent? Give them a second to think about it and move the whole list, not each one individually.
Right, so you're still talking, you know, with the minutes and the invoices and things like that, yeah, and then separate, so we-
All right, I think that is the way to that agenda.
Yeah, great, agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on that one? Mayor pro tem?
Just for the clarification, I think that's a great idea. Would we try to do that? So, the recommendation, if I understand correctly, would be like the Stephen, you know, would say motion to approve consent agenda 1, 2, and 3, so we can speed up the meeting?
Yeah.
Very good. Yeah, great idea.
All right, next section is public hearings and appeals. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I chime in on that a little bit?
Sure, go ahead.
If we just say consent agenda items 1, 2, and 3 for our minutes, don't- sorry, for our minutes, instead of saying just consent agenda items 1, 2, and 3 for our minutes for follow-up, then we need to identify our meeting minutes that we're approving? And the dates?
As shown on the agenda.
As shown on the agenda. Okay, and then I guess my other question then is, because I have a tendency to question our vouchers once in a while. If there's something that- if there's a discussion item that comes with that, then do we just back up and approve each one individually? And then discuss the one item if there's discussion to be added? Because I've never seen it change. I've never seen any one of these change. I'm just asking a question.
No, we are reading. If you have a question about one of the items, we can pull it, observe it-
Okay.
And then prove that separate.
And talk about that specifically.
And leave that in our resolution.
No, it's already set. Any item on the consent agenda may, at the request of any council member, be removed and considered separately. Mayor pro tem, I think you had your hand up?
I know it's covered.
Great. And, all right. And it's also, there's a note on questions on the invoices, Councilmember Follier. If you have those questions beforehand, so Kyle had the heads up as to what the question's gonna be, so he can have the answer prepared. That would be fantastic. Hearings, public hearings and appeals. The mayor will state the public hearing procedures before each public hearing. Quasi-judicial hearings require that a decision be made by the council, which may include record review of evidence considered and that specific finding be made. I don't see anything of concern there. Anybody else? Okay. Next, we have resolutions. The city clerk shall introduce the resolution by reading its title. A resolution is adoption of a city policy or decision, and may be adopted by a majority vote of the council, voice vote of the council. Any questions, concerns? Pretty much status quo, what we've been doing before. Ordinances. The city clerk shall introduce the ordinance by reading its title. All ordinances shall have two readings in two separate meetings, unless the council deems it expedient to suspend this rule. Amendments to an ordinance may be made at a first or second reading. A roll call vote shall follow second reading. Go ahead, Councilmember Follier.
Thank you. I just have one comment on that. Rarely have I seen this happen, but it has happened. Rarely have I seen this happen, but it has happened. Where we've had a first-read ordinance come to the council, and there's really been no description of what it is. So I would ask that we get a, some form of a oral description or a brief description of what the ordinance is covering from one of our department heads. And maybe, usually in there, at the heading, it says what the staff recommendation is, that's great, but sometimes it's nice to hear from the department head on what the general intent of the ordinance is.
So, it should be in your packet.
Right. I understand.
Yeah.
But it's not for my benefit.
Okay, gotcha.
It's for people listening, the citizens.
Understood.
So staff, so our background at the time of the first read.
Correct. And that usually, almost always happens, but not always.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Madam Mayor?
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
I'm trying to remember. So on ordinances on the first and second read, do you usually ask for any sort of comments or questions from the council or citizens? I'm trying to remember, I just don't remember if you do that or not.
Ordinances do have public commentary, resolutions do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so I'm moving on to page seven. If there was any other questions?
Yeah, I do. I have something I would like to add on the whole section there.
Sure.
Is that one thing that comes up quite often over the years, and even recently, is that what happens, the council member kind of sits here, and they'll have something they want to bring up. We don't know when we want to bring that up. And it happens quite often where somebody can say, can I bring something up? I'll use STA, for example. And Hugh, you're probably familiar with this also. They will go through their agenda and stuff, then they have something where they have reflections. They call it reflections, where any, any of the board members can bring up what they want to talk about. I feel we need to add something in here, and we can decide where it needs to go. I was going to throw off, maybe after general business. And that would be a section that any council member could say, I want to ask questions about this, or I want to bring this up. I know in the past, it wasn't that long ago, we didn't even have it written down for council reports. You know, it just sort of evolved into that. Because I do know it does happen, especially with new council members, will say, will try to bring something up. So if we have something in here, then we'll, that can be perfectly put on there, and we know that's where the council member wants to talk about something.
My suggestion, perhaps Mayor Pro Tem, is to do it at the front end of the meeting, because then we could maybe provide for it in the meeting. If you wait till after action item, meeting's almost winding down.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Quite honestly, I don't care where it is. I just threw out an idea for a discussion. The law is there, and it's in print.
So we've got Councilmember Kurtz and then Councilmember Seavers with comments.
I do like the idea of having a place to bring stuff up, because that's one of the things that I have kind of struggled with, when and where. And then, I think the other piece of it that leads into the introduction of upcoming agenda items, actually seeing what those are would be helpful. I don't know if it's appropriate to have them as part of the packet or in the agenda itself. But some of the questions that I've had or wanted to bring up, they come up in the, in the city administrators' report, or, and so, yes, having a good place to put questions, like, as an example, like, the, me wanting to do the commission on community engagement. I don't really know where to bring that up. And then you have to wait till the end of the meeting to see what's on the upcoming agenda. So that's just an example of, of maybe, how it'd be helpful to, anyway, I'll stop talking.
Councilmember Seavers?
I think it's an excellent point. I guess I've, I've viewed council reports as sort of our open forum time, but to your point, it doesn't, it specifically says reports, it doesn't say reflections or questions. And so, Katie, I completely understand what you're saying, right at the beginning of the meeting might be helpful. So I wonder if we could say council reports and reflections, on the same time to what Councilmember Kurtz is suggesting. Sometimes it's just a, it's really around, hey, when in a future meeting would it be good for us to add this to the agenda? So I wonder if we could say council reports and reflections, and then just be sure to add council comments to upcoming agenda items, or something like that, just to offer two times, and that way, agenda items is strictly agenda items, and reports and reflections is, it just, it's very clear that's when council, that's when we have the opportunity to basically say or ask questions of whatever we want. Though, I'll, I'll digress in a second. Reports and reflections, reflections may be asking for some dialogue, and council reports isn't necessarily the best time. So I guess I'll just throw that out there to the group, what do you guys think?
Mayor Pro Tem, you had your hand up?
I understand what you're saying, Hugh. I still would like to see a separate line item for that, for the simple reason is that when I look at reports, reports is for city council, any reports, and we're having reports of the mayor, reports of Tim Olson from the library, things of this sort here. So it's reports. I still think it's beneficial to have another line item, that, okay, council, here's something if you want to bring something up. I know in the past, that, under reports, I've had something, I've utilized it at that time, because I think, well, I want to bring this up for the future. And the challenge was, when I bring it up, I think it changes the tone of our meeting, because we're geared for reports, and all of a sudden, now I'm talking about, I want to, in the future, I want to have something added to the council agenda. So I think if it has a separate spot, it'd be more effective for us.
So are we thinking it might be more, more pertinent to put it with the, along with introduction of upcoming agenda items, farther later in the meeting, or separate after reports? I'm going to go to Councilmember Seavers real quick.
Mayor Pro Tem, I think you have an excellent point. It almost sounds to me, and I, you're all going to hate me for saying this, but it almost sounds to me like, like in every council mini-workshop, just to dialogue, what's, what's going on, what's on your mind, and what should we, what topics should we bring up? I'm saying that you're going to hate me for that, because I just hear long council meetings when I say that. And I don't think that's the point, but, but some mini-forum inside of our, our meetings may be beneficial just to increase communication amongst the council. And maybe that's what you're suggesting, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I would be in favor of that, just offering some sort of forum inside of council meetings, for council to discuss what's on, what's on your mind.
Okay. So, and I'll get you in just a second, Councilmember Kurtz. So still, so where are we proposing to put that then? I'm not hearing consensus on that.
I'd be up for staff recommendation, I guess.
Councilmember Kurtz, since you haven't had a chance.
After hearing what, what he was just saying there, I, I like the idea of a dialogue about things that are on our mind or things that are upcoming. And for me, like, that seems to fit with maybe the introduction of upcoming agenda items, and a description of it, that it's, so it feels like the agenda items are already predetermined versus us discussing what, what we want coming up and when. I don't know if that's an accurate description, or if I'm the only one that feels that way. I know we had a workshop, and we talked about upcoming agenda items, but sometimes it does feel like there could be a little bit more dialogue about what's coming up and when. So I don't know if it fits there or someplace else, but maybe somebody else has a better idea.
Mayor Pro Tem?
My idea was, what I recommended, maybe right after general business, was to be really experimental. Wherever we put it, let's try it for a period of time, see how it works. I would not recommend we put it near the end of the meeting, because let's face it, everybody mentally is closing down, and suddenly, we get into introduction of upcoming agenda, and we get a council member going, I got something I want to talk about. I could, because I used to sit out in the audience here, and I would see that happen. It would just be that mental, well, I was ready to go, now we're going again. The other thing I'd like to point out is that one thing comes up a lot in our discussions, is that so we can get through the meetings, it doesn't take so long. I go back and, because of my forgetfulness, I guess, I listen to a lot of the meetings, so, from my notes and stuff. And when you look at the agenda and what the meetings consist of, very little time we spend on discussions. It's home, it's just, we, day-to-day stuff we're dealing with. The agendas, all this type of stuff, resolutions, all this type of stuff, that's where we're spending our time. So really, what, what we spend our time on is not general conversation that comes from council. Well, can I say something? It was hard enough to get workshop on the agenda to begin with. It was there. Yeah, it was there. And I think workshop is for specific things. What I'm thinking about is that city and STA is a really good example, that they go through all kinds of stuff, and then say, okay, great, now, does any of the board members, or in this case, council members, have something they'd like to bring up? And I threw out why, just for an idea, maybe after general business, because we just discussed general business, that's fresh in our mind, because when we get into ordinances, we've already discussed ordinances previously coming up. So those things we tend to go through pretty fast. So I'm thinking, wherever we want to try it, along we try it. If it doesn't work after a while, then move it somewhere else on the agenda. But I think it's important to have it there.
Go ahead, Councilmember Seavers.
Thank you, Mayor. So are you suggesting then, adding an item between, item currently, or item 10, general business, and item 11, public hearings and appeals?
Possibly, for the council's consideration, but definitely not at the end. Because even I, you know, I'm mentally shutting down by that point.
Sure.
Looking for some input from the other council members, this is your meeting.
Yeah. I think what happened, can I say, I think what happens a lot, I'm at least for myself, I will be looking at, when we're going through action items and stuff, because I'm prepared for that, there's going to be some sort of a discussion. And it jogs things in my mind, where after that is done, I can, if it came right after that, I could say, you know, I got to think it about. Maybe we, as in the future, we could look at such and such. It's a good time to bring it up. So, just an idea.
Councilmember Kurtz, you had your hand up, and then I'll go to Councilmember Woodruff.
Oh, I didn't, I think I just had my hand on my face, sorry.
Oh, okay. Top slash by, Councilmember Woodruff.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we should try it. I mean, and I agree, I think, yeah, the general business might be a good place to do it. I know some of our meetings have run a little long, we wait to the end, yeah, we might just be ready to, no, I don't want to talk about that tonight, because I'm tired, want to get home. But, again, as a Zoom member, I don't always know when to bring something up, and that would give us all the opportunity. I don't think we should make like a 30-minute discourse about it, but just a couple of minutes and bring something up. So, let's give it a try. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And we're not out that much. But I think I like the idea. Give it a try.
Is there anybody opposed to putting, putting reflections, or whatever we decided to name it, between, after the consent agenda and before public hearings?
No, come over there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find a different name.
Mayor, can I make a question?
Yes, sir.
Can we just add a 10C then? Pardon?
10C?
Would you add 10C?
That works.
That works.
You're on a roll.
There you go.
What, I didn't hear what you said. What did you say?
Oh, add, have a 10C, so an A would be consent agenda, 10B, action items, and 10C, we will find a better name.
Council inquiries.
Council inquiries.
Council comments.
Comments.
I had council comments, so, my recommendation.
Good to me. All right, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes. Mayor Seavers, is your recommendation that it becomes under general business?
Yeah, A, B, C. It would be C, yeah.
My recommendation still is that it has a separate line, totally separate.
Well, it, it does, by being C.
Give it a number.
All right, 10C.
Oh, crazy, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm back.
Give it a number like 11, and move the number behind. What I reflect back on, is I sat out in that audience for years, and one thing I would sit through is I was there because I wanted to hear what my council was talking about. And when it came up for voting and stuff, and there would be a second, there would be a motion, a second and discussion, and it was crickets. There was no discussions. So my mind would go to, well, hold it. They've already made, they've already discussed this at some point, and they've made a decision, that's why they're not talking about it. So after a while, I started thinking, why am I even in the audience? Because I'm not hearing what the discussion is. I think our public wants to know, and wants to hear us discuss things.
Okay, we'll move on before we all lose it here. Page seven, emergency ordinances, public emergency ordinances.
I have one addition.
Oh, sorry.
You're kidding.
I think you filled your box with tick, tick cards, Mayor Pro Tem.
See, this is what's interesting. We're finally getting to talk about something, and how is it, it regresses into, are we wasting time, or we're not doing anything? Let's, let's do our job for the citizens, all right? Let's do our job for the citizens. One recommendation, I think that we need to add to this, is it about ordinances, when they come in. What has happened in the past, and happens in tonight's agenda. We have a second read on an ordinance, which last meeting was a first-read ordinance, on a change on the salary commission, and that was never in a workshop. Okay? I'm going to recommend we put in here that no ordinance is going to be put on for discussion or consideration until it first goes to a workshop. What I'm referring back to is, two years ago, Mayor Peterson at the time, came up with an ordinance that had not been, it was a first-read ordinance, and had not been discussed. We got into a really heavy discussion about that. So if it was an issue then, I think it could be an issue now, because tonight, we're in that exact same position again. We had an ordinance, we're going to vote on it tonight, and we, we've never had a workshop on it. My recommendation is we add that in here.
I guess my, I'll address the council way on that before I do. Any comments? Councilmember Kurtz?
I think this is what I was kind of getting to earlier, is just being able to have that discussion, that moment for discussion about an ordinance on the first and second read. I know that the, the public gets to do that, but I think inviting the council to have that discussion at the first and second read makes some sense, because those were the only points where amendments can be made, if there was any discussion and, and looking for a change. So if we can maybe make more of a point to do that, maybe that would address Mayor Pro Tem's concern, too.
So I'm going to jump forward, just for reference, to page eight, section 6.2, under resolutions and ordinances, procedure. Ordinances shall generally require two readings. The first reading will consist of a staff presentation and may include council discussion, slash workshop in my mind. The second reading will occur at a subsequent meeting and will involve a motion, and public comment, council discussion, and vote. So really, it's really already built in, we just haven't been following it. Go ahead.
Clarification means it doesn't work.
Well, and, well, and the council, the discussion in previous meetings has been that the council be reading, going through these every year and signing off on acceptance and understanding, so which I think is, is a big thing going forward, to make sure, because I know when I first started, I probably really wasn't familiar with what's on here. So I think if the council retries, you know, this every year, and it makes sure that they understand the procedures, and every time I go through this, I see something different myself. So if it's in here, we just, we need to start following it. Mayor Pro Tem?
No comment.
Katie, any, you look like you want to take a comment?
So the goal, I think, I always tried, and what are we trying to achieve? And I think what we're trying to achieve is that council has more information on the ordinances, and there's, sometimes new ordinances are new law, and they require a law discussion. Sometimes they're housekeeping. And regardless, if we have to do a workshop on every single ordinance, which is fine, I guess we'd need to know that ahead of time, so that it could get scheduled. I'm trying to just think of getting kind of, I don't want to say bogged down, because I want to make the votes used to council's time, but we also want to answer questions. So I, you know, if there is a controversial ordinance, certainly, and anybody works for workshop codes, and maybe public hearings. So let me go, let me ask this, let me put it into this term. The ordinance on the salary commission, we read through it, and there were two things that we were concerned about, because we had already had the change about who's related to your fam, or how are we defining immediate family. So we went back and read the ordinance. Two things jumped out at me. And I think Chris, maybe they jumped out at you, and you, we talked. The bottom line was, the ordinance did not say that the salary commission should be a citizen of Liberty Lake, nor did it say that you couldn't be related to a city council person.
No, it said you could, you couldn't be related to a city council member, but also it said you couldn't be related to an employee.
Correct, yeah. So that's what generated it. If the council wants to have more discussion on it, that's fine. Absolutely. And we would want, yeah, then that, it shouldn't be a problem to have more discussion.
So this section that we're going through right now, and I lost track of what section we're on, six? Yeah, oh, four, okay. It's really going through the agenda process here, but I think we do have the definition in 6.2 about having discussion on the ordinances and staff presentation. If somebody wants a workshop, we can add it to the agenda.
So at the first read, if we give the background, the council goes, no, we want a workshop, then we can schedule a workshop.
Comments, feedback? Got a thumbs up? Okay. All right, so I will go back to page seven, emergency ordinances. Public emergency ordinances require a vote of a majority plus one of the whole council membership and may be made effective upon adoption. A public emergency ordinance is one designed to protect public health and safety, public property, or the public peace. It may not levy taxes, grant, renew, or extend a franchise to authorize the borrowing of money. Any comments? Questions? Changes?
What page, John?
Page seven.
I have page seven, please.
It's on page seven. It's at the top.
We're looking at the
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so there's no comments on that one. We will move on. Then we have introduction of upcoming agenda items. No description, I don't think. I think it pretty much explains itself. Citizen comments? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Kurt.
Well, with the upcoming agenda items, maybe I'm the only one that feels like maybe some description is needed about, now I'm struggling to think of what the description would be, but maybe it doesn't now that I'm looking at it. I just, it would be, for a procedural piece in the meeting, it'd be nice to see those with the packet. I think then, because it's, sometimes it feels like a surprise because it pops up on the screen and we don't see it beforehand. So to be thinking about it and have any additions or suggestions or anything, it just happens in the meeting versus ahead of the meeting. That'd be my only feedback.
Yeah, I'll have Katie answer that since she puts those together.
Yeah, so you know, you're raising some good questions, and I'd love to get the feedback from the council, because really what Anna, that she puts together a highlight, a very abbreviated summary of what's on the June 1st meeting, I get it and I read it. And so really, it's not, it does only cover the next council meeting. It doesn't cover future, you know, all future council meetings, those kinds of things. The other thing though is if, let's say hypothetically, tonight I would go over the items that are scheduled for June 1st, so there's an awareness of what the staff has. But if the council wants to say, hey, I would like something, you know, more discussion about this ordinance that you're going to be talking about under first read, that would perhaps be the time, Mayor, where you could ask the council, is there any other or more in-depth information that the council wants at the next council meeting so we can be prepared for it? That's just a thought. Annie, but the other thing is, we're only talking about the next council meeting. I'm not going down out to the future. I'm only talking about the next council meeting.
And I keep, I keep thinking back, I'm sorry, Katie, I keep thinking back to that grid that we came up with that has been kind of passed around. So maybe I'm confusing that with just the discussion on upcoming agenda items, because the grid has like the, you know, kind of the TBDs and stuff on it too, so.
Yeah, and I have the grid, the matrix, we're kind of calling it. You know, and I'm going to ask you, are you guys getting a copy of the matrix? This document in your report?
No.
Okay. So what we will do is, and Ann's been putting them in my binder. I will work with Ann so that it's included in your binders or your packet as well. So you get the agenda, you get the workshops, and they talk about the 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. workshops that are, some of them have dates, some of them say completed, and some of them say to be determined. So this is where we're tracking workshops. Certainly, if a council member wants to add or delete a workshop, it's going to take the majority of the council to agree to add or, I think we already had that conversation. But I will make sure of two things. One is that, starting in June 1st, you will get a copy of the matrix. And number two, you'll get a copy of the upcoming agenda items. The only thing I'm going to ask is be patient with us, because these things come out the end of the week before, right? When you get the packet. And sometimes things change.
Thanks, Katie. I think that was my point too, is just that there's, yeah, that it's not set in stone. That's, that we do have to be flexible because it does come out early. But just kind of an idea of what's coming up, that'd be helpful. Thank you for doing that.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, prior to COVID, the way this worked is that generally, we always had 99% of everything on Thursday, including that to be determined. And because the benefit can be, is that if there was any changes, then that was given to us, sorry, the meeting, and we would change that on the agenda, with agenda approval. So COVID has definitely changed things. Let's hope that we can get back to that, because I'm in a position where I can get to this stuff a lot quicker with somebody who's still working in 8:00 to 5:00, 9:00 to 6:00. We have council members who get off work at 5:00 o'clock, they're social, or 5:30 by the time they get home, and they're trying to deal with the kids, dinner, everything like that. And something shows up at 5:15. They have no time to read it, let alone determine what it is. And then we expect them to come in here and make decisions. So with COVID now sort of going away, we're getting better control, I hope we can get back to that, just to be more efficient to our citizens.
All right. I'm going to note, we have five minutes left. My suggestion would be we just take a look at the last two quick sections on 4.1, and then we'll be, we can come back at 7:00 if that's okay with everybody. So after upcoming agenda items, we have citizen comments. No description there. Follow up what we had prior to that. Executive session, an executive session may be convened that is close to the public and attended only by a mayor, council, and invited participants such as city administrators, city attorneys, city staff, and/or individuals authorized by the mayor or city council. Council may go into executive session only for matters specifically allowable under state law. The mayor must state the reason for going into executive session and the estimated time for coming out of executive session. Final action on matters considered in executive session must take place in open session. Matters discussed in executive session are to be considered strictly confidential by all participants. Any changes for that? Okay. And then we have adjournment with no further business to come before the council. The mayor may move to adjourn the meeting. So I think that's probably a good stopping point. Do we have, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a great start. Like I say, you know, just Robert's rules, we've been trying to get everything we can around now. And I believe that there's only two recommendations, I believe, in Robert's rules, how we end the meeting, is that the mayor could ask for a motion second, and the council makes that decision, because we make the decision to start the meeting, we can do that. Or what the mayor can do according to Robert's rules is be able to say, if there's no other business, or, excuse me, is there any other business? The council responds, no, then the mayor, through Robert's rules, will be able to say, then I adjourned the meeting. So there is two options there.
That's good. All right, so we, Katie, do we have, I forgot, do we have a 6:00 at the next meeting?
We do. And so
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, in fact, it's going to be a pretty heavy June 1st workshop. We have finalizing council priorities and time for budget, and then we also have the rescue plan Sunday. So I guess I'd like to hear back from you and the council if you want to continue this discussion at the next June 1st workshop.
I don't think we'll have time, based on the other two things that are on that agenda. Can we take, do you mind if we take a look at the upcoming items and then send a note, send an email out to the council with suggested times to finish this up? Mayor Protem?
I do feel on this is that as a city, as a priority, we try to get this done. So we
Yeah. We'll take a look and see what we can shuffle around. We'll get a communication out to the council with some suggestions. All right, so we have, according to Verizon, about, oh, Annie?
Oh, just that I would like to finish this work, if we can, at the next council meeting in a workshop or something, so we get it done.
Okay, we'll get something out to you as soon as we can. So we will be back in less than two minutes.
Yep.
Okay. Let's go, let's go. All right, we're waiting for more people to rejoin. Started. Oh, and I still didn't hear back from Quigley. I left him on, um, where'd it go? B, action item B two.
Which one?
B two, the development agreement. We'll pull that out and try for the next meeting, yeah.
Eliminate that? Because we never heard back.
Mm-mm. I'll try it again today.
Okay, so I'm just gonna put a line through and say remove.
Yep. You have the revised one you're working from?
Yeah.
All right, top top everybody with starting weights. Okay, while, let me see, we have one, two, three. Okay, while we've got everybody getting situated here, I will go ahead and kick this off today. Welcome to our Tuesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, City Council Meeting and Public Hearing, Pursuit of Governor's, Governor Enzi's Order Twenty Twenty Five Twelve. Local governments must allow persons to attend public meetings remotely, provided however the proclamation further allows in-person meetings under limited conditions in addition to remote public meetings. At the present time, due to the conditions required to hold in-person meetings, the State of Liberty Lake will continue to hold all public meetings remotely. Hopefully some of this will change in the, in the short future. We're waiting on some additional guidance with regards to public meetings. So just a quick note, we will have two, two opportunities for citizens' comments. If you have any comments, please send a message through chat to Todd Henderson, who will be managing those. We also have opportunity for a public hearing. What? Am I talking and we're not on?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought something was going wrong. Sorry, everybody. So we'll have a public hearing, two opportunities for citizen comments and opportunity for inputs from the citizens on second read ordinances. Again, for all of those, please send a chat to Todd Henderson. Give him your name and whether you are city resident or not. So no further ado, we will start a meeting with the invocation. Councilmember receivers, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Would you like to do the invocation for us tonight?
Absolutely, thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us today. And always we ask that you have our backs, be behind us as we're doing the best we can for our city and our citizens. As usual, we ask that you please be thinking of those who keep us safe, our firefighters, police officers and military personnel, and any other first responders out there. And thanks for springtime weather. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to very public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Go ahead and take a quick roll call. Please indicate your presence by saying aye. Councilmember Woodruff?
Aye.
Here's the, Councilmember Follier?
Aye.
Councilmember Langford?
Aye.
Council, Mayor Bergen Kennedy?
Present.
Councilmember Reivers?
Present.
Councilmember Kurt?
Present.
Okay, and I know Councilmember Dunn contacted me earlier today. He is on family vacation and has asked to be excused.
Madam Mayor, make a motion.
Excuse Councilmember Dunn?
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, moved by Mayor Proten, second by Councilmember Woodruff. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of excusing Councilmember Dunn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Was, was that for, for the excuse or not excuse? You're a little delayed. The receivers?
Sorry, that was to excuse.
Thank you. You must have felt a little bit of a delay on your sound. Thank you, just wanted to clarify. All right, so Councilmember Dunn is excused. Now we move to the agenda approval. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Few changes tonight. Most everybody got the recent revised schedule. You're looking at it, you'll see some things are in yellow that came up within the last short period of time, so just to address that. One was under announcements, proclamations, special presentations. We'll have a presentation, Greenstone donation to Rocky Hill for council consideration. Also is nine workshop discussion on Trailhead Staffing, Trailhead Farming.
Can you hear your mic?
Is it not on?
Yeah, well, I don't know, but I may even have it. You're just talking really low tonight.
Okay.
Just trying to hear you.
Also, we have to consider removal under B action item two. That would be approved development agreement with Liberty Lake Land Company. Have that removed?
And are we adding B four?
Which one?
B four. And B four. We have contract with Surf Pro?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. For approved contract with Surf Pro, $12,000 for treating air quality in Trailhead facility. Make a motion for those changes.
Remove the.
Okay, make a motion of second for the amendments. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The amendments are approved. All right. So we move to citizen comments. Todd, do we have anybody? Nobody at this point? Okay, Ms. Garcia, I haven't seen you until you join us for a quick comment.
Thank you very much. I'm commenting in regards to the workshop you just had. You had eight point one, eight point two, eight point three in discussion in regards to citizen comments and approval. I would ask if you just revisit those items. Eight point one talks about citizen comment being citizens can comment on only items subject under consideration by the council. Well, the citizen comments comes prior to the items that are under consideration. And when they make a comment of items that are for consideration, there is no input back to the citizens. Eight point two, citizen comment also says that if action is required regarding a citizen's comment or further information or it should be put on an agenda for further consideration or given to a staff or committee, that does not happen either. And neither is a person allowed to speak on the items that are on the agenda as there is no area for citizens' comments. For example, in case ten B on the agenda, action item ten B, if a, if an individual speaks in regards to action item ten B during citizen comments, they will most likely not get any comment back from the citizens, from the, excuse me, the council. Then it's eight point three, subjects on the current agenda. Any member of the public who wishes to address the council on an item on the current agenda, so make such request to the chair. There have been a number of cases when citizens have made comments to the council and asked that items be placed for future agendas. That has never happened in the sixty, almost six years I've been here, and I don't know if it has happened before. Also, in regards to an item that you had a moment ago in regards to listening to resolutions, changing ordinances, et cetera, et cetera, having workshops, first read, second read, et cetera. The items on your agenda, oftentimes the resolutions and ordinance conflict with things that you have done. So for example, you've made changes to certain ordinances and resolutions, but it hasn't been vetted out to be consistent throughout all the other ordinance or resolutions that reflect the same principle. One might wonder if this is intentional or if this just has hazard, have hazard process. And I would wonder, because the city attorney, less often, he does not speak up and give guidance during any time. This is discouraging because we cannot tell when the city attorney is either on the meetings or is participating, as we cannot see him. We cannot, we do not know what identifies him on these Zoom meetings. On a number of meetings, questions have been asked of the council and the mayor, and they have said, well, we don't know, our attorney is not here. I don't believe he is a, at an hourly waged employee. So I would like to see him as a citizen on the Zoom meetings in person. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. And the, those sections that you referred to, section eight will be, will be reviewed at one of our future workshops. We appreciate the input. Todd, is there anybody else?
No.
Okay, sounds like we will respond to citizen comments to announcements, proclamations and special presentation. Enter this one.
Mayor, we were made aware of a donation from Greenstone, the Greenstone Foundation, and I believe there's some young citizens on the call today. And so at this time, we're gonna ask that they share with the council a project that they have in mind. I think Mr. Joe Frank is going to introduce it. I saw that he was online, so I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Am I allowed to share my screen?
Yes.
Go ahead. And Joe, I do, I do see, what I'm assuming are several of the members of the, the group involved. So if, I'm assuming you will be introducing them, so we'd love to meet them as well.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, just in a second here, they'll introduce themselves. I just want to make a point of clarification. The group that will be talking tonight is the Liberty Lake Entrepreneur Club, and it is operating under the Greenstone Foundation. So the Greenstone Foundation, as we move forward and hopefully get approval from the city to move forward with our project, the donation will be made through the Greenstone Foundation and our corporation. So I just, just point of clarification. So I, I'll start the presentation. Councilmembers and mayor, thank you for letting the Liberty Lake Entrepreneur Club take a few minutes to introduce ourselves and our idea. As a parent, I'm extremely proud of these girls and what they have accomplished over the last couple of months, and I'm sure you will be impressed as well. With that being said, I'd like for the club members to introduce themselves prior to us continuing on with the presentation.
Hi, I'm Abby Clevenger.
Hi, I'm Addison Powers.
Hi, I'm Chloe Thomas.
Hi, I'm Kayla Johnson.
Hi, I'm Lily Rhodes.
I'm Logan Mariota.
Think we're missing one or two?
There's still a couple more.
Hi, I'm Mara Frank.
And Samantha.
Samantha Huffman.
I'm Cindy Serpenamy.
So with that, we'll start our presentation.
So the members of LLC, there are eleven in total. I wanted to learn the basics of becoming entrepreneur. I applied a lot, such as profit and loss statement, budgeting, marketing, become an entrepreneur. When I first started brainstorming ideas, we had loads of them. Some of the top ideas were babysitting, dog walking, kids' club, at the farmer's market and more. But after lots of discussion, we have arrived at. I'd say.
We're having a little bit of a, a technical challenge, Joe, skipping.
Yeah, yeah, Sam had, she had a little bit of, it sounded like her audio there was skipping out. I can, I'll, I can go back and read that just so you can hear what she said because I have her notes. So she said, this is a picture, currently you guys can see the picture of the group here. This is a picture of the members of the LLC. There are eleven of them in total. Sam said when she joined the club, she wanted to learn, learn the basics of becoming an entrepreneur. She said she learned a lot, such as profit and loss statements, budgeting, marketing, savings and investing. She also got to watch some videos and how to become an entrepreneur. When she, when the group first started brainstorming ideas, they had lots of them. Some of the ideas were babysitting, dog walking, kids' club at the farmer's market and more. And after lots of discussion, the group arrived at the idea they loved most. And from there, Addison Powers will take over.
The winning business idea was to open a snack shack in one of our community parks. Our snack shack will be located in Rocky Hill. If you are not familiar with this park, it is located in the eastern portion of Liberty Lake along Mission Avenue. We picked this location because it is a busy park where people come frequently to play at the playground, attend a summer camp, have a sporting practice or to meet and just hang out. Rocky Hill is a place of community and friends. In addition, it would provide people at the park with all the things they need to have an exceptional afternoon in the summer.
Now imagine if you're at the park watching your kids play and it is super hot up. You're thirsty, but there's nothing to drink. A good tip is Pacific Northwest snacks where all your snack and food needs will be met. Pacific Northwest snacks will be a great place for kids to come with their friends to hang out and have a good time at the park. It will also be a great place for people to host celebrations, parties and concerts. Pacific Northwest snacks will be a great addition to the community.
This is the state of the current snack shack building, except for now, after this weekend, we demolished the whole entire ramp. This building was originally made by the Rotary Club to be a concession stand. Even though it looks rough on the outside, it's a pretty nice space. It has been in Rocky Hill for as long as I can remember, but it's never been used. Building in the park was the inspiration for the snack shack business idea. Many of the girls in our club live in or close to Rocky Hill. We are in the park frequently with our family and for sports, and we cannot wait to get started. This is a site plan we worked on with Mike Terrell from MT LA. Mike is a local landscape architect. As you can see from the image, we plan to make the snack shack an additional focal point in the park. We envision adding some cafe style, style seating and as well as updating the exterior of the building to better represent our new vision and brand for our snack shack. We have a long way to go, but we're ready to dig in.
As you can see from the previous slides, we have a lot of work to do. And this slide outlines some of the major improvements that we intend to make. For example, we want to add power to the shack because we want to be able to have frozen foods like ice cream and popsicles as well as cold drinks. We want to have ADA access so that anyone can get to the shack, from people to strollers, from people in wheelchairs. This shack needs to be repaired and repainted because right now it does not look that appealing, and we really want to attract customers to our business as well as have a functioning snack shack. The landscaping also needs to be improved so that we can make the snack shack look nice. We would like to add some patio furniture for our customers to use while at the snack shack.
We have some hard work in front of us, but we're very excited to get involved in our community to the creation and operation of the Pacific Northwest Snack Shack. We think this added amenity, along with the opportunity to get some real life experience in opening and operating a small business is directly in line with the City of Liberty Lake's vision statement, and we sincerely hope we have the city's support moving forward. Again, thank you for your time. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Great work, girl.
Girls are prepared to answer some questions if there are any questions.
I am sure, oh, it's just, so we'll take questions from the council first. I've got a couple, but I'll let them chime in first. Mayor Proten?
What I'd like to say, what a great presentation, guys. That was outstanding. I really love to see the effort that's being put forward there. My question is, what type of a timeframe, ladies, do you think that this will be able to be accomplished?
So right now, Mike, the timeframe we've talked about, it sounds like the girls are a little bit unsure how to answer here. So the timeframe right now is, we've started to look at, get some bids and, and we know we have to go through the gifting process with the city. Our goal is to be open prior to the Fourth of July, but we do have a lot of work, so that's our current goal.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kurt?
I just wanted to say you guys did a really nice job presenting, so thank you for that. It was very informative, the slides were all put together, you guys spoke great. So thank you for coming to talk with us tonight. One of my questions is, how did you guys get to be in, in the group, in the Entrepreneur Club?
Um, so for the Entrepreneur Club, most of the girls are from like the soccer team or the Mathis School Club. And then from there, we kind of built off of it. And most of the girls came from the Mathis School Club, but others just joined when we made the Entrepreneur Club. And we wanted to make a concession stand somewhere. And that, it was conveniently the, the shack, there wasn't being used. I just thought that would be a good place to put it.
Thank you. You guys did a nice job on the presentation, and I like your idea.
All right, Councilmember Langford has a question.
Yes, what hours of operations will you be having your snack shop, snack shop open?
So this is a topic that we haven't discussed as a group yet, and it's for sure one of the areas that we have to focus on as we get closer to open. Initially, at least from the, the parent group that's helping out, we've talked about Friday, Saturday, Sunday for two to four hours, depending on availability. And then depending on how the shack gets used from there, the girls will, you know, discuss and should they have more hours or less, less hours.
Sounds great, thank you.
Councilmember Woodruff?
Thank you, Mayor. Girls, great job presenting. I like the idea. You just answered the question about hours. I'm wondering about staffing, there's only eleven of you. Are you planning on adding more people, hiring people if things really go well? Or are you planning to staff this all by yourself?
Any of you guys want to give a shot at that?
Well, we're mostly planning on, I think, doing it ourselves with like two or three girls working at the snack shack at a time.
We had, we had an initial discussion. Oh, go ahead, Lily.
We're all planning on having like. Um, and there's some younger girls running this shack too.
So Lily, you were breaking up a little bit. So we have, we have eleven girls in, and obviously as part of the consideration here, we talked to the parents. Our goal is to have two or three girls at a time, and there will be a parent there at the same time. And we, when we have that discussion, as I mentioned, we talked about initial hours of Friday through Sunday, and, and the, the families made those commitments. That being said, you know, as we go, our hope is that we'll attract other people interested in the Entrepreneur Club and, and be able to, you know, hopefully it's a great success and we'll be able to open more hours and have more, more members. And, and we've talked even a little bit about our, our long-term goal is that this is not just, you know, a one or two summer thing. You know, we hope this is a program that these girls can be mentors to future classes and continue the, you know, continue the program through.
Councilmember Follier?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a production question, since I really like ice cream. How many flavors are you gonna offer?
Any girls want to answer that? Go ahead, Mara.
We don't exactly know about that. Most likely it will be like store bought ice cream. Also, another idea that we could possibly join with the snack shack, that was actually one of our original ideas, is that when me and my dad were in Hawaii, we came across this really good, um.
Shaved ice?
Yeah, shaved ice, uh, well, food truck. It was, they had really nice flavors. And I liked, because they like put like actual toppings on it. It was like really good. So one of our, uh, starting ideas was that we could branch off from that and make another branch in Spokane.
So the, the girls have, as you can imagine, the girls have a tremendous amount of ideas for what could be sold at the snack shack. From our discussion points, we talked about, and Mara mentioned this, that, you know, initially we'll probably be just doing pre, you know, pre-produced products. And, and part of their, this process for them will be understanding what permits are required and, and what they can do once they start preparing food versus not preparing food. So, so that's part of the process is understanding, you know, those, those issues that could affect their business. But the, initially, the goal would be to, you know, just sell prepackaged stuff and as they get the hang of it, and that they would grow and expand their, their offerings from there.
So I'm gonna ask Councilmember Follier, what's your favorite flavor?
Oh, all of them, Moose Tracks.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Reivers said, see your hand earlier?
No, but I'll, I'll just comment that, ladies, you did an excellent job presenting this, and I think it's an excellent idea. I look forward to the progress you make on this, and I'm very excited for the learning opportunity for each one of you.
Yeah, I don't think there's more, much more than I can say that everybody has already. Great presentation, great forethought. I love the fact that you're working, you know, with, you're working with ADA requirements and working with the landscape architect and worrying all about, you know, those requirements and that whole process. So I guess my question, my last question for me is, so when you, once you get this going and up and running, do you guys have a goal for, to raise money for another project? Or what, what is the additional mission, mission statement with regards to your process?
Any of you girls want to try at it? That's a, I would, that's a very good question. Go ahead, Cindy.
Um, Mike, we're, I think like we're hoping to like raise funds and stuff from like local businesses and things like that, and like sponsors and stuff.
So Cindy was talking about to raise money for the capital projects to be able to do the projects. In terms of, you know, so right now, the main focus on them is understanding their costs, their revenue. And, you know, I think the idea would be that from a, a working standpoint, the girls working through the foundation would get some sort of, I guess, money as part of that working process for working the stand. And then any excess money that they earned would go into the Greenstone Foundation. You know, currently, the Greenstone Foundation missions are, you know, affordable housing, education for those that can't afford it, things like that.
Great, great seed money for entrepreneurship. Great, great seed money for entrepreneurship education for to continue here in Liberty Lake. I love the idea you guys. Fantastic. You have any questions for us?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you, girl.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, always good to see some ambitious young ladies. Okay, so next we have got reports, city council reports. Any meetings to report on from the council? No, here, oh, there you go, Councilmember Kurt.
Um, I've still been doing my weekly coffee time at 7:30 on Thursdays, and I'm going to do that until I don't. So I know it says it goes through August 26, but it's a perpetual meeting time. So 7:30 in the morning. And then, as I've told people, I might look at doing something different also during the summertime, maybe at a local park or something COVID permitting. The other thing that I wanted to note is that there, if anybody has ever been interested in becoming a foster parent or looking into becoming a foster parent, there's a critical shortage of foster parents in Spokane County. And there is an event coming up sponsored by Embrace Washington and Department of Children, Youth and Families on Friday, June 11, from 6 to 8 p.m. There's childcare offered. If you have your own kids by reservation, they can watch your kids while you attend the presentation. There's refreshments provided by Longhorn Barbecue, and the location is the Sun City Church. So if you've ever thought about becoming a foster parent, again, there is a there's a need for that. And so it'd be awesome if you'd be able to, guys would be able to go. And then I wanted to look at getting something on the agenda coming up in the next meeting or two, if possible. We I've talked about the commission or the the council on community engagement. And I would like to work with Katie on what what parts I need to do to get that ready for the council to talk about and consider. But I would like to have that on an agenda, hopefully sometime soon, so we can get going on that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kurt. Any other councilmembers have any reports for us? All right, seeing none. I'll make my mayor's report fairly short here tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Liberty Entrepreneur Club. Obviously, that was already that was done for me, which is fantastic. I did send out to the council, I forwarded a sheet from Kyle Dixon, our finance director, comparing the the property tax rates that are that are in place. And we talk all the time about Liberty Lake controlled rate per thousand being less than Spokane Valley and less than the county. So I just want to make sure we got that that confirmation and the breakdown to the council, because I love having that conversation with people. Yes, our property values are higher, so I understand property taxes are higher because of that. But but the rate per thousand truly reflects how we use the money and the services we provide. You, as homeowners, you guys are paying less per thousand. You get a fantastic police department, great street sweeping, great snow removal, the library's included. It's extra, it's extra for the county and the valley, which is included in those calculations. But, you know, it's been that way since since I've been on council. So again, I love having that conversation with people that that you're getting more from us. So Farmers Market on Saturday was bonkers. It doesn't officially open until nine, but I was talking nonstop from 8:30 to to could have been past one. Started packing up. We still had people stopping by. It was nonstop, very well attended. Usually the first day of the Farmers Market is cold, windy and rainy. Awesome day, as you all know, if you were in town. Lots of vendors. I didn't have a chance to get out everybody because I was so busy. But it's very obvious from where I was standing that we have more vendors this year and more variety. So I really encourage the public to come out. Looking for what a couple volunteers, if you'd like to join me on this Saturday, anywhere between 8:30 and 1 o'clock, the council members, if you'd like to join, come on out and, you know, meet some people and answer questions. They were all really positive feedback. People were asking about the project. We had some people asking about the Liberty Boys Academy, which is obviously outside city limits. So I'm kind of just explaining to people what's allowed down there and when the city might be able to weigh in on that project. But really great positive reactions. And the Rotary was there because they're not having the pancake breakfast. They're there telling everybody about the event that is happening on Memorial Day and getting the word out about getting donations for that. And I'll let Katie address that event a little bit more later. Other than that, we have a couple of things coming up on the agenda that I don't need that we can talk about at that point. The question has come up about motorized scooters, both privately owned. And, you know, is that line out there who keeps asking, you know, to kind of get in? I know on the council priority list, it's it's been pushed out to 2022. There's a lot of concerns, I think, both from public safety standpoint and from citizen standpoint, about what those rules are, how they might have to change. We have seen some line bikes and scooters migrate their way into Liberty Lake. I'm not quite sure how the technology works. I know they've got some sort of electronic geographical boundary where they're supposed to turn off, but apparently there's enough play in that, but some of them ended up on the very western side of Liberty Lake. So look for more discussion on that. And aside from that, I think that's all I've got for today. So Katie, you're on. Oh, no, I'm not. You're not on. Tim Olson's on, library. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just a couple updates coming from the library. Want to make sure you guys are aware of. So positive news, we have, we started Aaron, has been promoted up to children's librarian. That was Jenny's former role. We actually hired a new employee out there, Adrian. She's been on staff for about two weeks now. Comes from King County Library System. She's working in front desk and circulation. Everything's kind of positive there. One of the really important parts about the library is programming. It's been a favor of the community for a while. Came from the assessment. It's all going very well. Recently, they had this thing I missed. Unfortunately, I was working that day, but they had a science kits with Radical Rick. They had an Earth Day celebration. They had some baby spruce trees to plant in the community. They've got rid of all those. So that's a good positive thing. Coming up, well, just this afternoon, we had some team programming. They did a noodle stir fry, where they learned how to cook on a video call. They were able to pick up some of the items from the library. More team programming was a real focus of the from the community through the community assessment program. They've really accomplished this and done tackled this and done a good job. The next thing is really exciting. Last year, yes, Spokane Transit Authority started a bus pass program. So this year, they're continuing that. And so beginning on June 15, you can get to the library, children ages six through 18, go to the library and get a free pass to ride the bus around Spokane over the summertime. This is a great program that's been started and we're still still moving forward. The next thing will be the Summer Reading Time Program. We'll start in June after school's out. The staff is really geared up to give lots of prizes away for lots of reading going on this summer. So make sure people look at that. The other thing I want to mention is due to COVID restrictions and stuff like that, is that the library is now operating at 50% capacity. With our small library, that's 30 people. They're able to come in and spend 30 minutes at a time. So six days a week in order to get as many people through as possible. We have a lot of demand for this. And so also to accommodate some of the needs of the community, the staff is continuing on with some of the special programs they're doing, such as, because everybody's not, you know, confident in coming into the library in a confined space. They're going to continue to do things like curbside pickup. So with that said, I'll conclude by saying that as the council gets more guidance from the federal government on the use of the American Recovery Funds, the trustees have got some ideas on how to help spend some of that money. We look forward to presenting you many ideas here over the next several weeks. It'll help you assist in distributing these funds based on the federal guidelines you're receiving. And that is sort of the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim. Casey, before you jump in, I did, there was one more thing I wanted to mention. So there is an amazing group of volunteers out there who are working on an application for the traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall to come to Liberty Lake in 2022. And I just want to give them a shout out. The application is due later this month. They've already raised excess of $45,000. I'm sure it's more by now. I missed the meeting on Thursday. So the application's being sent in. I believe, if I remember correctly, the decision will be made in the fall as to where it is going in 2022. But it it looks to be a fantastic opportunity for Liberty Lake. I I I had a great discussion with Visit Spokane about the opportunity, and they are on board to help the group and the city with anything needed to help promote it, because people come from, you know, hundreds of miles away to see this. So look for more. Big shout out to to Diki Garcia and the rest of the group who are running with that. I'm very excited about the opportunity.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, or good evening, Mayor. Remember the council. Today's food license for me today, but I'm going to go over my report fairly quickly. One of the things I wanted to start with is the June 1 workshop. Now, obviously, we didn't finish the workshop that we had this evening, so I'll be asking and reaching out to all of you if you wanted to stay the course, which would be to tackle the American Recovery Plan for or and the council priorities at the next workshop, or if you want to continue with rules and procedures. So be looking for an email so you can give me your feedback. The other thing I was going to mention is Councilmember Foyer asked about the speed limits future on Country Vista. Ben and Chief Simmons have done a lot of work and research. They they looked in our community, in our county, they looked at the technical requirements. And so they want to give you all an update on what that plan looks like going forward. So and answer any questions that you have. So this isn't a for sure make a decision is let's, we're going to share with you our ideas and get your comments. So that would be at 7:00 p.m. Okay. Before I move on, I do want to mention the matrix is something that Ann and I have been working on, and it tracks all of our workshops. And what's good is we don't take off workshops. So if it's completed, we write completed next to it. I will tell you, though, it's very, very fluid. I get probably one or two updates a week. So we will provide to you the most current in your packet going forward. But just keep in mind that it's very fluid. I'm going to jump over to COVID. We all know that there were changes in the mask requirements from the CDC and the federal government. What I wanted to share with council, so you're aware of, is that LNI and Department of Health has not changed the mask requirements yet for our staff. And so we are status quo. Here at City Hall, our staff and at our library are required to wear masks. And so we get more updated information. I just wanted to pass that on. And I'll also mention, Jet Camp is very, very involved in the weekly updates at the county level on parks, reservations, flashpads, all of those things. There's a meeting that's Friday, so we don't have any anything to report right now, but we will keep you informed as we move along with the rest of the community. I'm going to jump down to local vaccine clinic. As some of you know, on May 7, we have the vaccine clinic over at S T C corporate parking lot. 73 folks are vaccinated. The second round is June 4. Take send out an email reminder today to the 73 folks. Anyone that needs a second dose can come. And the link on how to register is being sent out. So the the hours were changed. Instead of two to six, it's going to be three to six. Bid openings next week. I'm going to just let you know, it's a very important week for us. Kramer Road Overpass will be opening the week of the 24th. Let me think about that. Next Monday is, is that the 24th?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't remember. Okay, so and then also, the Public Works Yard spreadage improvements are going to be opening as well. And I will share with you that Ben has been evaluating the growth and is evaluating if we could open in the short term or not. So that's still under evaluation. I know there's a lot of folks that live in Legacy Ridge and Legacy Ridge West that have questions. And so we want to be able to answer those questions. So we'll check for more information shortly. I want to jump down after recruitment's underway. But before I do, Mayor, I wanted to ask Ben to introduce Phil, our new project manager. His first day was yesterday, so I will turn it over to Ben. And it's not on my my list here, but Ben mentioned that Phil is good to be online. He is.
Hi, Phil, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, I just wanted to introduce to everybody our new project manager, Phil Messick. Just want to let everybody know, he's jumped in feet first and already taken on the role of setting up all the project structure and everything for the flashing beacons for our recon on Thursday. So he's he's jumping right after it, second day in that position, and has a lot of great construction experience.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, hi, everyone. I'm Phil Messick. Happy to be on board, project manager. I've done a lot of inspecting and construction experience and looking forward to work with Ben and and trying to do my best to serve the community.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
So moving along, salary commission, the deadline to apply is May 21. And if all goes well and the mayor completes her interviews, then we would ask that the appointment be on the June 1 council meeting. That's kind of our goal right now. And then finally, there are newer seasonal maintenance workers. I'm not going to tell you quite anything you don't know. It is hard to find help. But we do have some recruitment out there looking for seasonal workers. Stepping down to events, there's quite a few. I'll spend a little bit of time on some of them, as Mayor mentioned, Farmers Market. What I wanted the council to know on the Memorial Day ceremony, all of you are invited to attend. And in addition to physically being at the event, it is going to be live streamed, I believe, on Facebook. The other thing, we got confirmation. So in addition to our mayor being a keynote, we received confirmation this afternoon that Kathy McMorris Rogers is going to personally be attending. She's attended in the past and really fortunate that she was able to put us on her calendar. The other thing is there's going to be a float up at Pavilion Park showing the American flag and very patriotic. Then there's going to be a luminaire set up in a geometric pattern to look like Arlington. People make donations by buying a luminaire, and those funds then go to honor flags. So it's a, they have also raised a lot of money. But again, it's not the pancake breakfast that we had in the past. So just wanted to mention that. And you guys are all invited. Churchill Air Force Base will be there to do the raising of the flag, the retirement, the colors. So it's going to be a very, very patriotic event. And then moving along, garage sale, book sale, we've covered those in the past. The fireworks are still scheduled for the Fourth of July. The library's tour A, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, in July 14. More information will be coming. Cornhole tournament, I, as far as I know, is still scheduled for late August. And then the Labor Day and city's birthday, always around Labor Day. More information to come on that. And then before I move on, there's something that really warmed my heart. I'm going to read a resolution that we received from the city of Springtown, Texas. And this is very, very touching, because some of you may know, citizens in Texas had a very, very difficult spring and winter due to storm conditions. So I will read this resolution that we received from Springtown. A resolution of the city of Springtown, Texas, expressing appreciation for the efforts of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, in support of city of Springtown employees during and after the February 2021 winter storm. Whereas, during February 14 through the 21st, the city of Springtown experienced severe winter weather, which tremendously impacted infrastructure and hindered the city of Springtown's ability to sustain vital services to its citizens. Whereas, despite the weather conditions, city of Springtown employees continue to work tirelessly in order to keep vital services sustained. Whereas, Chris Kamiskas, mayor of Liberty Lake, became aware of the ongoing winter storm and the efforts of Springtown employees during the storm, remained in contact with the city of Springtown throughout the storm in an effort to offer any and all possible support to the Springtown employees and residents. And whereas the following winter storm, I said that incorrectly, whereas, following the winter storm, Mayor Kamiskas and the Liberty Lake community continued to show support for the city of Springtown, including by including by presenting each of the city of Springtown employees a gift of appreciation donated by members of the Liberty Lake community. Now, therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Springtown, Texas, the city of Springtown remains overwhelmingly grateful for the thoughtful and generous actions of Mayor Chris Kamiskas and the entire Liberty Lake community, and that the support shown to the city of Springtown by the city of Liberty Lake is an extraordinary example of community, regardless of the physical distance between them, supporting each other during arduous times. And so it and it is so resolved, passed and adopted by the city of Springtown, Texas. passed and adopted by the city of Springtown, Texas, on the 30th day of March 2021, signed by the mayor and the city clerk. Sorry, I that's a very long resolution. It warmed my heart. I wanted to read it all. And I'm just going to hold this up. Let's see.
It doesn't show very well.
I have a plaque from the city of Springtown, very nicely done, that we will hang on our memory wall.
Yeah. And actually, I think Kyle has a little video message to share from the city. And we haven't seen this. And again, I want to shout out to all the community members who came together. The initial ask was or goal was to provide care packages for their public works department and their PD. We had enough donations to to get a gift bag together, care package together for every single one of their, I think it was 42 or 49 employees and great, great citizens for it. Couldn't be couldn't be more proud of this community.
Donations from UPS?
Yeah. So UPS store paid for all the shipping, storage solutions paid gave us the boxes, yolks and Safeway both donated product and enough money for Mark Sabah, one of our volunteers, to go shopping for the the gifts, the care packages, among other Safeway and Albertson's stores and not in Liberty Lake who donated. So go ahead, Kyle.
Excellent. All right. I'm going to throw this up right now and I'll share my screen.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor and city council of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington. I want to take just a few moments to thank you so much for your kindness, your generosity, and your compassion that you and your citizens showed our employees down here in Springtown, Texas, through the recent. I'll tell you how much that good kindness meant to myself and to my employees. Police Department was promoted to receive the coins from your police department. All of all that, it was very comforting that you were stressed to know that your community as a whole was down here in Texas. Again, I cannot express my appreciation for all that you have done. I guarantee you that the city of Springtown will not forgive your kindness, and we will bring your kindness. Thank you.
Honorable mayor, Council of City of Liberty Lake, Washington, I was greatly touched by the compassion that you had shown and harshed that during this difficult time surrounding the winter event that we experienced back in February. We greatly appreciate the time that you put into making sure that our staff was appreciated during that event. We remain greatly grateful for your kindness that you had shown by your actions, and it will not be forgotten. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that, Kyle. Springtown's a lot like us. If you guys ever have a chance to Google them, very interesting how much they are like Liberty Lake. So glad the community stepped up. All right. All you've got? All right. Thanks, Katie. So now we're on to the workshop discussion. First one, actually, the first, they're all free with regards to budget amendment that will be coming toward us. And Kyle is going to address these changes.
Yeah. So we'll split these up into three sections. As you can see here, the first one is a 2% salary adjustment that I believe was initially discussed during the budget season last year. And I think that was eventually put on pause from from what I understand to really evaluate where we're at with revenues kind of heading into 2021, with the understanding that we would we would revisit this in the spring, which we are doing right now. And so revenues are outperforming expectations pretty much across the board. We are in a pretty safe spot to proceed, in my opinion, with this adjustment. And so I recommend that 2% adjustment. And so if anybody has any questions, I'll answer those now before I kick it over to our HR manager Heidi to discuss the Trailhead staffing a little bit further. Are there any questions out there?
Kyle, if you could just for the public, obviously, it's they don't most of them don't have a packet. If I remember correctly, the the cost of putting in the COLA increase for the second half of 2020 is approximately $25,000.
That is correct. And we put it in there not to exceed $25,000. And so it's probably going to come a little bit under that, but we do have to account for, you know, if we have more than more overtime than anticipated. These are very small adjustments, but we just want to make sure we have that accounted for in this budget.
Council, have any questions or comments? Councilmember Langford?
What city employees does COLA affect?
All but the PD. Is that correct, Kyle?
Yeah, all the PD and seasonals.
PD, seasonal.
That was going to be my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Go ahead, Kyle.
Okay. So moving along, I'm going to kick it over to our HR manager Heidi. And so she's going to elaborate a little bit more on some of the staffing changes regarding some employees over at Trailhead.
Thanks, Kyle. So since my arrival, one of my first tasks was to look into the Affordable Care Act. And the Affordable Care Act, also known as ACA, requires us to provide benefits to employees who are full time. And we have several seasonal employees who work full time. However, a seasonal employee is defined as an employee who works six months out of the year, and the season has to be defined. So as we all know, Trailhead is kind of a year round operation. So it's very difficult for Chris to define a true season. As a result, we decided that with some clever staffing maneuvering, it would be better to move employees who have been classified as seasonal to regular full time employees to avoid the staffing challenges that arise for Chris and be in compliance with ACA. Is there any questions on that? Or do we need to elaborate anymore?
Good. I think Katie wants to add something. Then we'll let the council member curts. I see some critical look. So basically, Chris and the library and also our seasonal crew out in the field, they have been, we have been using seasonals for many, many, many years. And we use them, and I use the term permanently. These seasonal people generally don't get laid off. Generally, they stay on board. And we are required by law to provide benefits to them. And in addition, we can't have seasonal employees not be seasonal. After much thought, we think that the best course of action for our operations, so it's Jen's crew, it's in our library, and it's also at Trailhead, is to convert some of those seasonal people to full time dedicated positions with an eye on affordability, sustainability, and the work. So this is two positions that are at our golf course that are truly permanent positions, changing their classification from seasonal to be permanent with benefits. Because we have to pay benefits regardless if they're seasonal or not, and we can't keep them longer than a season. So does that answer the question? No. Okay.
Heidi, is there any more? You look like you were thinking.
Yeah, let's just try to get some clarification.
Yeah. Heidi, can you maybe expand on that a little bit? It's a little hard to.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, can Odin, can you explain where where you would like me to expand more?
Yeah. Who was we that decided this? And where did they get the information from to suggest this?
So I researched the law. And then I brought, it was one of my first assignments, was to make sure we were in compliance. And then I brought to Katie, my and Jen and Chris and RJ, my findings with what a true seasonal employee meant. And when you define a seasonal worker, they have to be temporary. They have to work a season. And we don't give temporary or seasonal employees medical insurance. And now, if, I mean, so we don't give them medical insurance because they're seasonal employees. However, as Katie mentioned, without using without using the word permanent, they have been permanent seasonal workers. And that's not the correct definition. So a season had to be established. And that's easy enough for Jen's crew. We have a spring summer season and a fall winter season. But with Trailhead, you know, they can start golfing sometimes in February is what Chris explained to me. So the best solution would be to not to work with the employees that we had. And my understanding is I don't want to get too much into what the additional staff or the changes in the staff are because I don't know, but to be in compliance with ACA.
So if I'm, let me summarize what I think you're saying is that what basically what we're doing right, what we're doing right now is managing our seasonal workers puts us out of compliance with the ACA, and this will get us back into compliance because they're not really seasonal, they're really full time. We just haven't been treating them like that?
Correct.
So clear as light.
And ACA is very difficult. So I know it's hard to understand what I'm saying, and I may not be explaining it very well, but I'm really trying. It's it's a very difficult act to work with. But yes, exactly what Chris said, we're trying to be in compliance because we have not been treating the seasonal workers as seasonal employees.
Okay. We started out by saying that Trailhead couldn't couldn't come up with a good way to classify season. And then that flipped around to where now we're going to put on full time members benefited. So why didn't we address the original problem of just not being able to define a season and define a season?
Because the season changes. A season can't be longer than six months. So if we hired a worker, which it's very difficult to find a seasonal worker in, let's say, February, for example, they cannot work past August. But the season for golfing may go into late October. So now Chris is down a worker.
Councilmember Langford, I'd also like to add, every time we bring on a seasonal and then we lay them off, we pay directly for their unemployment. And so we're, if we have to bring you on for, and I don't want to exaggerate this, but let me be very clear. Six months on, you get laid off. You bring on someone else for six months, you lay them off. And this vicious cycle, and you're training and training and training. And we're and the people at the golf course between running the pro shop, giving lessons, these are, I believe they all have their PGA certificate or whatever it's called, they're sometimes hard to find as well. And it's more than just working at Trailhead. This is not working out in the field on the maintenance group. This is working in the pro shop, giving lessons, helping with the women's club. I, you know, I don't want to exaggerate this, but these employees that we have are trained. They're not like a maintenance, they're not a maintenance worker, they're a trained professional. And so we hire them, we keep them, and they think classified as seasonal. And we're trying to correct that because they're really full time people. And so we're trying to make that correction.
How long do you expect Jen's crew to remain seasonal under these new conditions that we're offering certain previously classified seasonal people?
So I'm going to let Jen answer that question because she's going through a huge undertaking to transition to be in compliance with ACA. It's best that she answer that question.
Yeah. So I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I apologize. My video is not working for some reason. So you don't get to see me tonight. To answer that question, Councilmember Langford, we are we are challenged this year because our seasonals now are limited to six months out of the year. So like Heidi said, we had to define what that season is. And so as of right now, I think we're March, it's either March or April through September, end of September, whatever that six month span is. So we hire our seasonals, and then we have to lay them off. They cannot work past that six months. And in order to compensate for that, it is more of a load on our full time maintenance workers. They're going to have to take on more responsibility once we do lose that those seasonal workers after six months, whereas we were keeping them longer in the season. Did you? Did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. We just heard from the city administrator that these were not people that would be affecting Jim's crew or maintenance workers, that these were golf pros, especially trained to be working the golf part. But now you're saying that their not being there is going to affect the crew, our crew.
Well, we've had, yeah, we've had to adjust our work schedules and our workload dependent around this six month season where we didn't have to be so concerned about that in the past. So what we're hoping is.
Jen, I'm sorry. So Jen, the two positions that are in the ordinance are only Trailhead staffing, not Jen's staffing. Jen's has her own challenges. They're separate and apart from Trailhead. So that was the distinction. These are employees, they're not Jen's crew. Jen's crew is doing all the maintenance on the golf course, but they're not working in the pro shop. But Jen's crew's challenged as much as the Trailhead employees are because of ACA. So let me be very clear. Jen's ordinance that is for Trailhead staffing does not affect Jen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah, to Councilmember Langford's point, I understand where I think I understand where you're going. So we put this in place for Trailhead. The next step would be people asking to be have that change also made for.
She's also making the transition. Jen, Jen, you ought to explain, you guys, are you interested in the work that she's doing? Okay. Jen, can you talk about your transition?
So our transition over the past few years and the goal continuing on in future years is to slowly turn out the balance and the bulk of our seasonal staff so that ultimately we have our the bulk of our our staff will be full time maintenance workers and not seasonal workers. Traditionally, in the past, the bulk of our staff was seasonal workers through the season. And so over the years, RJ and I have worked very closely together to slowly turn out our seasonal staff numbers, our quantities each year, and bring on more FTE maintenance workers so that we're flipping the balance, if you will. So it used to be that we had the bulk of our season was seasonal maintenance workers with a very few handful of full time maintenance workers. And the goal will be to switch most of the work year round to the full time maintenance workers and only have a handful of seasonal maintenance workers. That's taken several years to achieve and will still continue on for the next several years to get to that point.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, but I have to draw your attention to the fact that, you know, I've been here, you know, a couple of years, and I haven't approved through the council or seen the council approve more full time employees for your division. Therefore, I'm wondering how you got the full time employees without coming before the council who has the authority to establish full time employees? And how do you expect to do that with the years coming?
We've added those to the budget every year. So every year that we add new FTE maintenance workers, that is part of the budget process in the fall.
Say we disagree. Okay.
So I did see somebody's hand up. I don't know who it was. Councilmember Kurt.
No, Councilmember Kurt.
Well, I think the question that I had originally was the answer, just how many staff that it affected at Trailhead? And then Katie gave a good example of why there's a benefit to keeping them on. And so is there a ballpark estimated cost?
Yes, yeah. So through the end of the year, and so this is effective June 1st as proposed. And so through the end of the year, I believe the number is 21,500 for the remaining six months or seven months.
Thank you. And just if I can just add to that, I think that, I think there is some return on investment in investing in employees and giving them benefits and keeping them full-time and knowing that they have, you know, the stability of a job. And so rather than retrain and retain, I think retention of employees is important as well. So I understand that there is a cost associated with it. But I think for the stability of Trailhead and the staffing, I think it makes some sense. And to be in compliance with law as well.
I've got a question. And Kyle, maybe this is something maybe you and Heidi can work on and bring back for the next meeting. I'd be interested to know how much we would be saving in unemployment expense by going this direction. See, you know, if we're going to save a bulk of it by doing this, if I come out close to Washington, I have no idea what those numbers might be. I'm not well-versed in unemployment costs. So that would be a good number to get in front of everybody so we can see that comparison.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah. Expenses, including liability insurance, okay?
Sure.
And possibly other things associated with full-time employment.
Yeah, and I'm assuming looking at that number, Kyle and Heidi, that $21,000 and change was fully loaded with benefits, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
For portion of this year?
Yeah, starting June 1st, yeah, starting June 1st for two people. So question, Kyle and Heidi, right now, if my memory serves me correctly, we have one person full-time benefited at Trailhead. This would increase it to three. And those three individuals would operate the facility year-round, seven days a week. Is that correct? And holidays?
That is my understanding, yes.
Yeah.
So one of the challenges is, of course, is that, I know in the winter, those days are, or the operations isn't as long. But one of the challenges is it's a seven-day-a-week operation and it's not eight hours a day. It's 12 hours a day. And having three full-time people, you know what? Chris is better at explaining this than I am, but I'm just sharing with you what he has brought to our attention. And this was, in the past, he'd use seasonals. He's not able to use seasonals anymore. And this was a solution that he worked with. So, but certainly we should bring back Chris on the next council meeting to answer questions because he's better suited to answer his staffing levels than I am.
So the staffing levels aren't changing?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no need to bring him back to cover that he needs three people to-
But the staff, because if we don't make them full-time, then they're going to be laid off and then the staffing levels will be impacted.
Okay, and how long has this been going on?
Um, what's been going on?
These seasonal, whoa, seasonal employees there?
Those, they've been here, they've been here since the first of the year. They've been here-
Well, before that. Three employees years ago. So how long have, how long they've been three people there taking care of us?
For a long time.
Okay, and all of a sudden it's now a problem?
Problem because of ACA.
We've been out of compliance.
Who is ACA?
Affordable Care Act.
Affordable Care Act.
With regards to benefits, Obamacare.
Medical mandate. Can I jump in here?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
I have a question. Are we self-funded unemployment?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so I look at it like this then. You have a certain amount of hours, you have a certain amount of hours that you need to provide service, whether it be Trailhead or Streets or Library, whatever it is. If we're not, if we're stretching the definition of seasonal past six months, as it sounds like we are, then we're working on nine months, 10 months, whatever the, 12 months, whatever it is. So to think that there's any savings in the unemployment that's self-funded really, to me, is irrelevant because it's the hours you need to provide the service. Fair statement, right?
And still, let me, Councilmember Fuller, just to make clear that I have my terminology correct. Self-funded means someone applies for unemployment, rewrite a check.
Exactly. It's not true to state.
So that you know, if someone's paid off, is the money, we get a bill from the ESD, Employment Security Group of Washington State, and we write a check to them for the unemployment.
So we still pay it.
So we don't pay quarterly premiums. You just write a check straight out to whatever they've collected?
Correct.
Got it? So that's irrelevant because you're going to have that part of the equation if they work 12 months or 10 months or six months. So it doesn't really matter because we got to provide the service. And it takes a certain amount of hours to do that. So to me, the difference that becomes is the additional benefits to come along with hiring an employee. Is that really the difference we're talking about here?
That is, and it's also the time to onboard employees because when we do go through the interview process, then we have to hire them. We have to do a background check. We have to bring them onboard. We have to train them. And you know, there's a little bit of downtime before, in a gap in doing that. And it's, there's a lot of staff effort in the recruitment process.
I understand. So once you get that recruit and you get that full-time person, and we may not be able to employ them 12 months out of the year, then I would think that we find efforts to employ them in other places that the city might need on those couple of months that they're not needed at the Trailhead or they're not needed somewhere else.
Correct.
If they're going to be full-time employees, all I'm saying I would encourage is they're able to do more than one task.
Correct. And that's happened last year, as a matter of fact. During COVID, those employees at Trailhead, because Trailhead was closed, if you recall, got reassigned and assisted Jen's crew.
So the real difference then is we're providing the service. The difference is that.
Right, correct.
And basically, and then skills, correct.
So I've got First, Councilmember Severs, and Kurtz and Woodruff.
Yeah, I'll just, one, just voice that I, Heidi, I very much appreciate all the work you put in this to ensure that we're in compliance with the law. And secondly, that I trust the department heads and the discussions that have been happening at a department head level, whether it be Chris or Jen or Heidi or Katie or whoever it is. Appreciate you bringing it to us and I support what you guys want to do here. And it sounds like these guys are full-time employees, not seasonal employees by law. And this is what we need, this is what we need. So I support you guys moving forward with making these folks true full-time employees and providing benefits as legally required.
Councilmember Kurtz, you're next.
Hugh just eloquently said part of what I wanted to say. And I think to capitalize on or to kind of join up with what Phil was talking about. Generally with employees, you can count on about 75% of an FTE for a workload because there's vacation, there's sick time, there's training, there's all these other things where employees are maybe not doing their actual function because they're doing something else. So I think the fact that we have three full-time people running Trailhead, 364 days a year, is pretty remarkable, the number of hours they do. So I do support, I feel like it's doing the right thing and to bring them on and pay them benefits for their work.
So we had Councilmember Woodruff.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this because looking at the future, we're going to be replacing a building. We're going to expand the offerings. Hopefully eventually have simulators that are going to require more staffing. One of the things I found out is somebody who has to hire and manage employees is you get more loyalty when you have full-time employees and part-time employees. We have a better chance of having people stick with us. And I think having a crew that's been with Trailhead for a while when we get into building the new building will really be a benefit to us. But to mention, as Councilmember Kurtz said, it's doing the right thing by our employees as well. So for that reason, I would support this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Langford?
Yeah, Jen, how many part-time employees do you currently have?
I'd have to check. Right off the top of my head, I think we have probably, and Heidi, you probably know better than I do, maybe 12?
Oh, okay.
Yes, I was going to say 10.
Yeah.
So my concern is not for Trailhead, okay? I see the value in Trailhead. My concern is that I can also, from looking backwards, look forward to know that this is not going to stop with these two employees, okay? And I need to know more about how it's going to affect the budget. And I need time to think about it, look for other answers and to evaluate it, not simply present it during budget time and say, here, make me the decision on this. So I do appreciate the work that you've done on it. I understand the predicament that we're in. But I would just like to see some figures backing all this up. And that's one of places with 12 more employees, okay? And is our attempt, what is our long-term attempt? Is it to rid ourselves of part-time employees? Or are we going to redefine the seasons and hire within those specific guidelines? So I'd like to hear some comments more about it, but thank you so much for your help to this point. I can see where you've been working pretty hard on this.
So Jen and Heidi, I'll submit an additional request to support Councilmember Langford's question and concern. I know, Jen, you had said that we've kind of, you've kind of slowly moved some seasonals to full-time. Maybe for further discussion the next time that we talk about this. Can you just draft your timeline for those additional 10 to 12? So we can take a look and see what, how that might look each year in the subsequent budgets?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I can do that. I can put something together for Council.
Great. And I think the other thing that we want to share, Mayor and Council, is we don't, we know that we're always going to need seasonal. And we want to have the seasonal defined by the season. And that's what we've done is we've defined a season like March through October, October through March. And we know that we'll always have seasonal, but we want to do it consistent with what is required. I can't imagine what the fines might be. Mayor.
Great. Yeah, Councilmember Langford?
On the seasonal comments, if we have 12 now and they're working six months and the other half are working six months, then reasonably we should have less full-time employees to make, we should have less seasonals. If I'm going to be very safe, say it correctly. No, I said that right?
Is it one for one?
Less full-time, it's not one for one is what I'm saying. Less full-times to replace the seasonals, which is times two. Is that fair?
If we, when we, and Jen, you're going to have to tell me out here, but my recollection is you said that it's not one for one. And that, okay, go ahead.
It's between two and three seasonals per one FTE is the gauge.
Wow.
So for every one FTE we bring on, we eliminate two to three seasonal positions.
Wow. Good, good information. Great question. Thanks, Councilmember Fuller. All right. So there's no more questions on that. We'll have Kyle move on to the Trailhead project funding.
Yeah, absolutely. And so as discussed at the special meeting over at Meadowwood Tech, we approved a budget for the improvement project. And I'll have Katie talk a little bit about what the next steps are. But we are going to input $250,000 of the proposal. We're going to input $250,000 into a, you know, what we would call a Trailhead Project Improvement Fund or something, something along those lines to then have Katie and Lisa begin design development.
Thank you, Kyle. So basically, to take that first next step, we did some research and came up with 3% of the $8.4 million as seed money to begin bringing on a consulting firm to assist us in what we call design development. And so we have to go through a RSQ for qualification than to hire someone who can assist us in putting together a procurement for architectural services and manage this project going forward. How do we arrive at 3%? Lisa did some research. She reached out to Central Valley School District. This is the model that they use in the development of all of their schools and their facilities. And they, and this would be all-in. It's not just, you know, billed to you monthly or hourly, excuse me, but they pay approximately 3% of their budget towards this service to help us begin the design development stage. So design development begins when we hire an architect. This is hiring a firm to help us manage the scope of design development and the budget. The financing strategy will come from Kyle. As the design gets better defined by the council, then we get the budget defined. And we already know the upper limit is 8.4. And we know that the cost of this is included in the 8.4. So 8.4 all-in was the feedback we got from council. And this would be part of that 8.4. And it would come from the general fund. Is that correct, Kyle?
That is correct.
And so by the time we identify the selection process and do the interviews, Lisa and I were talking about this firm that we hired would come back for the council to approve it probably in July or August. That's about how long it's going to take for us to do that. Councilmember Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. My assumption is that this $250,000, it would be drawing it out of the $2 million that we have here for this project.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Langford?
Yes. Kyle, as you know, from our recent meeting that we had, we all agreed that this was the way we wanted to proceed. Since that time, we have received disheartening news on the federal level as far as inflation, gas prices, food prices, a whole host of other areas. I am not suggesting by any stretch of the imagination that we don't do this or don't put it or put it on hold. That's not my intent. My intent, though, is to ask you to speak with whoever is necessary. And if you have the knowledge, that's fine. To kind of figure out what they're projecting our levels of inflation to go to, especially within the year's span, if we plan on taking two, three years to get this project done. What the inflation is going to be, have influence over the economy for that period of time. And then come back with, how is this going to affect our bonds, our ability to fund those bonds in the mode of inflation, what that will have as a result against our budget? Does that make myself unclear?
No, that's a great point, Councilmember Langford, yeah. And so to expand on that a little bit, I've been in, I've had preliminary discussions with municipal financing firm from Seattle that RJ's worked with in the past. And so I was going to have them, you know, come at some point, you know, maybe this fall. Maybe we need to bump that up even to give, you know, a 10-minute spiel on where they see the market going in the next year and when potentially may be most advantageous to take advantage of any bond should we go that route. So stay tuned for that. We will get some professionals on subsequent council meeting to provide a lot more clarity that I can provide on that as well, so.
All right, I'm going to go to Councilmember Severs and back to Mayor Protim.
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment that generally speaking, high inflation is not good for bonds. Rising interest rates is what increases bond rates. So I'm not overly concerned with rising bond yields or what we'd have to pay for bonds based on rising inflation factors. And I'll just put that out there as a preliminary to that conversation with the professionals from Seattle.
Thanks. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Langford, thank you for bringing those points up. I think, I think it was very important. The thing I had in mind is probably a continuation of that is that, you know, we've said all-in at 8.4. We realize we're looking over a period of 24 months before we probably get something accomplished. It'll be interesting as soon as we can start getting- as soon as we can start getting separation between hard costs and soft costs, because the inflation is going to hit us there hard time. Because I know in the past, we've sort of looked at, and we sort of had in mind 1.7 to $2 million possibly for the driving range, something in that vicinity we talked about, and we've thrown out for years, it could be $5 million for the building itself. So, there's $7 million there on it. I think these numbers are going to be very important as we move forward. The simple reason, when we start taking out the soft cost and inflation, how much hard cost do we have left to actually build, and what will we get for that money? I think that's critical that the council has a handle on that as soon as possible, and we can explain that to our citizens. If not, we're going to have people coming forward saying, but this is what, this is what you promised. Well, there'll be a difference between what we've promised and what we can afford. Thank you.
All right. I think Katie had.
And those are great comments, because whenever you build multi-year public works projects, you have to anticipate what we call escalation. And so, the cost of labor, the cost of supplies, materials, all of that, that needs to be part of the design development, because soft costs, hard costs, escalation is going to hurt projects, and we know that. What it does is it compromises your ability to afford more scope.
Absolutely.
And so, you factor that into your design development, and you make estimates. I mean, you say, we're going to estimate, I don't know, an inflation rate of five percent. I'm just making up a number. I'm not in that world anymore. But there are people that know what the public sector job escalation is. The other thing is a bidding strategy. You have to bid things at the right time, and if it's a really hot market, you probably don't want to bid things. You want to wait a few months until the market slows down a little bit, and people are more interested or hungry, you call it, to bid your work, because competition is one of the best ways to keep our projects down. So, just some thought, but this is, these are all great questions, because at the end of the day, we have to anticipate escalation. We have to anticipate the bidding environment. We also have to anticipate the timing of when we want to take it to the market.
So, if there's no more questions, I do want to have, go ahead, Councilmember Langford.
Thank you, Mayor. As we move forward with this process, as Katie said at the beginning of this process, all I would ask, Kyle, is all of the previous efforts, all of the previous information that we paid for, be all brought to the table and laid out in front of whoever it is that's going to evaluate this project. I think, all I'm saying is I hate to see our previous investments just get tossed in the waste basket and start over from scratch, because I don't think you need to start from scratch. Thank you.
Understood, thanks.
Yeah, one of the things that Kyle and I had talked about is, and I think it's one of the best ways to keep track of the project, is to set up a separate fund for the project, and not just manage things in and out of the general fund. It's the most transparent way to make sure we're, we're on schedule, on schedule with regards to our costs. So, I'm assuming that will be part of the budget amendment when it comes to us.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilmember Langford.
Uh, not to belabor the point, Kate, but are we going to find ourselves in a similar position with the bridge because of what's starting to happen now, and we haven't really even broke ground?
Well, that's a great question. Structural steel and concrete are more expensive, and labor is more expensive. How much, and this is a question, I don't know, how much escalation did Wash Up put into the bid estimate? I might ask if they can answer that question. I think that there is a bid contingency, and we'll know next week. There are many plant holders on this project, which is good. I don't have a crystal ball, I'm not close to the market anymore. And so, what I would say is that generally, in public sectors, they anticipate escalation. We'll know if they anticipate it, just have to keep it within budget.
Well, I think, you know, just for myself, you know, we worked really hard to get the city to a debt-free place, okay? And just on my, my part, it's kind of hard to now start, we're talking, you know, six million here, eight, nine million. Anyway, I want those projects. I think they're needed, because we do have to move on. We can't always stay in one place. But I just want to make sure that since we're dealing with a lot of other people's money, that we do so in a very prudent form. Thank you.
Great, great point. All right, anybody else have any other comments or questions before we move on to general business? No, Katie, Mayor Proton, you're up.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Consent agenda, I make a motion to approve items under consent agenda one, two, and three.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Okay, any questions, discussions? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of approving consent agendas, items one, two, and three, as shown on the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved.
Thank you, Mayor. Be action items, motion to approve purchase of five Axon Enterprises Inc. body-worn cameras in the amount of $12,898.
Second.
Okay, move to second by Councilmember. Your sound delay is getting at you. So, are there any questions? Chief Simmons is on. Anybody have any questions for him on this one at all? Not hearing any. All in favor of action item one, to approve the purchase of five Axon Enterprises body-worn cameras for $12,898, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. Action item number three, approve, I make a motion to approve line contract with a Vista from Mission Villa Neighborhood.
Second.
Move to second by Councilmember Langford. Any questions for the discussion? We talked about this at the last meeting. Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Oh, wait.
Just got that too there, Mayor Proton.
We removed it from the agenda.
Yeah, that was removed, right.
Okay. So, we're going to just make sure I have my bases covered. Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Action item last, announced least, item four, approve contract, motion to approve contract with Surf Pro in the amount of $12,000 to treat air quality at the Trailhead facility. I emphasize air quality.
Second.
Okay, move to second by Councilmember. I know I kind of gave most, gave the council a heads-up on this last week. It came in lower than we expected, but I will add pages for the, for the public's knowledge as well, what this, what this item is for.
So, during our annual inspection by our risk manager for all of our facilities, they pointed out that they were concerned about Trailhead. They spent a little bit of time there, and so, they asked that we do some air quality testing. We got the results last, I think it was Thursday night, and I, the results showed that they recommended not closing the facility, but that we fog it, and so, that's going to happen Wednesday night, if you approve this contract, Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. The building can be occupied three hours after that. The fogging's at 9:00 p.m., so we should be okay to open up the next day for business. They did not recommend any other steps to be taken, but we are going to do monthly testing on our own, send it to a lab, and just monitor the situation.
Any questions? Councilmember Kurt.
How long does the fogging treatment last?
So, to answer that question, and I will follow up and get a technical response. I did talk to the mold expert. He did tell me that mold is tricky. Those were his words. We do not have a severe problem. What we're going to do, Councilmember Kurt, is keep the doors and windows open for air circulation, and encourage, you know, that kind of, and just do our continual testing. How long is it good for? I think it, that's why we're going to do monthly testing, because I don't think anybody's going to give us an estimate on how long that's going to last. I will tell the public, as a reminder, it was probably, oh, boy, five, six, seven years ago, we actually abated on the hole downstairs. We cleaned up the whole facility, and that was a good number of years ago. Mayor, do you remember how long ago?
Probably five.
At least five years ago, and we're just doing our due diligence at this time.
Katie, Katie, may I add to that? They said that the, the treatment will last as long as we don't have any foreseen moisture or future water issues.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Proton.
If I can make a comment, earlier, earlier this morning, I had coffee with some friends, about four or five was there, and this subject came up about what was going to be on the agenda tonight, and the conversation went to is, well, we're going to tear the building down, why spend the money? Then it was also said that we're going to spend the money, and we're going to have the building for a while, why don't we put some ventilation in there? And I think it's important for the citizens to realize that what we're trying to do is do the most cost-effective and logical approach that we can with this building, you know? One, we don't have enough lipstick to put on this stick. So, so we're doing the best that we can in taking care of this situation. Now, the benefit is, if we look at this, that is further incentive why we need to move forward at Trailhead. Thank you.
Councilmember Langford.
How long is Lincoln's going to be there?
They're currently, they just re-signed their six-month lease. I believe it was their intent to stay even after they moved to their new building with serving different kinds of food, because it's, you know, they, they own, I think, part of that equipment.
Let me get a, go ahead. Because their month is going from, excuse me, their lease is going from annual to month.
Well, no, they just re-signed, they just re-signed their six months.
Six months.
Did they? Okay, so six months would take them to the end of the year?
About, yes. Okay, all right, so, so I get this decision of further discussion. I'll take a vote on approving the contract with Surf Pro in the amount of $12,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, all, all approved. All right. So, we will now move on to public hearings and appeals on the sign ordinance. Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Todd, can you bring up my presentation, please? So, last, last council meeting, we workshopped changes to the sign ordinance, and, well, I'm waiting for the presentation to come up, we, this is a public hearing, and there's some specific information that I have to share with you, public hearing, and the findings and conclusions that are required to be considered as part of your adoption of any amendments to the ordinance. Here we go, here we go. And recognizing that the hour is late, I'm going to try and be pretty quick through this, and this is the wrong, this is the wrong presentation, Todd. Can you share, can you allow me to share my screen so that I can pull it up?
You should be good.
All right, give me a second. My apologies, it's taking just a minute to pull up here. All right, there we go. So, again, the reason that we brought this forward is because our sign code is relatively old, and there are some sign types that we were requested to consider, um, let me make that go away, that we were requested to consider, that are really more pedestrian-oriented, and they're intended to, certainly to be included in, like, neighborhood commercial like we see in the River District, or in the proposed new River District Town Center. This can be very pedestrian-oriented, very Kendall Yards-esque. So, the changes to the code really are intended to allow for blade signs, which you see in the upper left-hand corner of the screen, awning signs going clockwise, canopy signs, and marquee signs, which are, as of today, have not been allowed in our sign code. Next slide. So, again, basically, the proposal summary is pretty simple. You've seen it in your packet. We talked about it at our last workshop, and the details of the proposed amendments are in Exhibit A, but just to highlight, where are we proposing to allow it? We're, for blade signs, we would allow them in residential zones, on public, semi-public and, not occupations, not residential buildings. We would also allow them in all other zones, not just blade signs, but awning, canopy, and marquee signs, and the standards for these signs are included in the ordinance. And in those other zones, not residential zones, but the other zones, we also included some standards to allow for some limited uses of neon signs. And again, the neon sign standards really were designed to follow our new lighting code, and basically, the illuminants, if it's under 750 delivered, or if it's over 750 delivered lumens, it has to comply with that. Under that is exempt, and it would be exempt under our lighting ordinance, and it absolutely prohibits pulsing, flashing, or moving signs. Um, again, we, we went through a procedure. We had a number of planning commission workshops. We did go through the SEPA that's required by state code. We did all the noticing that was required, and planning commission held a hearing and made a recommendation. And the, so the planning commission's findings were that we, that we had followed the required SEPA review procedures, and that all public and agency notice requirements were met. The public had the opportunity for early and continuous participation in both workshops and the hearing. The planning commission conclusions, basically, that led to their recommendation is that the amendment is consistent with the comp plan and not detrimental to public welfare. The amendment is warranted by a change in economic, technological, and or land use changes. The amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. The amendment is necessary to provide for use that was not previously addressed in the code, and the amendment is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. And with those findings, the planning commission unanimously recommended that the amendments to the ordinance be adopted as written. And so, with that, I can answer any questions, or we can go right into public discussion.
Councilmember Langford.
Lisa, just one, just one question, Lisa. I noticed that the blade signs, we've also made arrangements for blade signs to be lit, decorum.
To be, I'm sorry, say again?
We've made allowances for the blade signs to be illuminated.
Um, only, only in the, only in the non-residential zones.
Thank you.
And when they're illuminated, they do still have to meet the lighting standards.
Okay, that's what I was interested in, the residential areas. Thank you.
Councilmember Collier.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, if you could clarify for me, under prohibited signs, ten Lisa, if you could clarify for me, under prohibited signs, ten dash three, B dash three, or we have stripped out item number four, flashing and neon lighting used as alternative to signage, expose neon signs, are we addressing that elsewhere?
So flashing signs are explicitly prohibited in a different section, but what we... Yeah, so, so, so as you see, item number three, flashing signs are explicitly eliminated, but flashing or neon signs used as an alternative to signage, expose neon on signs. So what we did, we took that out because it created a conflict with what's being now proposed, which is neon signs as long as it meets the luminance standard. So it's not super bright, can't be flashing, can't be moving, can't, so we've addressed all those things. But a simple low luminance neon sign can be very attractive and can be very pedestrian oriented.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, not seeing any. I guess we can start our public hearing. If anybody would like to make a comment on the sign ordinance proposed changes, go ahead and send a chat to Todd Henderson and we'll recognize you to speak at the public hearing, which we will start now at 8:50 PM. We'll give you guys a chance, if you have any questions or comments, go ahead and send this over to Todd. Wait until 51 here. Running out of time. All right, so no, no comments or questions at the public hearing? We will close the public hearing at 8:51. Thanks Lisa for your help.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda is resolutions, which we have none. In ordinance, we have a couple first read ordinances and a couple of second read ordinances. Anne.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, members of public and staff. First read ordinance, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 276. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending City of Liberty Lake sign code regulations contained in City Development Code.
All right, is there any, as we are reminding ourselves through our rules of procedure, are there any comments or questions from the council with regards to the sign code amendment at this time? All right, we'll move on to the next one, Anne.
Okay, ordinance number 269C, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance amending ordinance number 269 passed by the city council on December 15, 2020, entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Adopting a Budget for the Period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, Appropriating Funds and Establishing Salary Schedules for Established Positions.
Okay, we obviously had a long workshop on this. Is there anything else that anyone wants to add? I know Katie did just, well, I'm not going to steal from you, go ahead. She did, she did have one more piece of additional information with regards to the FTE and seasonal. So I completely forgot to mention that what changed is that when this budget got approved, we crossed the threshold from being below 50 FTEs to being above 50, five zero FTEs. That triggered the Affordable Care Act requirements that we were not operating under prior to January. So I wouldn't want the public to think that we were not doing our due diligence on the Affordable Care Act. It was the threshold had not been crossed prior to January. So Jen had let me know, I think RJ had brought this up a number of times, where our staffing level went to cross 50, pardon me.
How many over are we?
I don't have that count. Heidi, do you? Yes, she is, she's muted. Heidi, do you know approximately how many full-time employees we're up to now? For Kyle, do you happen to have it?
I do not have that information now. I can look it up though and try to get it to you before the end of the meeting.
Follow up later.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I apologize that I was distracted while I was not remembering that earlier. All right, do we have any other questions or comments on that one? For me, we want to order to the second read.
I do want.
Good, Mayor Perot.
I do want 269C. That's based on recommended action from the staff, recommends suspending the council rules of adopting ordinance with the second read. Therefore, I would make a motion that we waive the second read ordinance, second read for ordinance number 269C and approve it tonight.
There are second to second. So we have a move in a second to suspend the rules, to move first read ordinance 269C to second read. So any discussion on suspending the rules? Seeing any, all in favor of suspending the rules to move to 69C to second read tonight? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Laugh for that delay there. Any opposed?
Could that delay?
All right, so there's none opposed, so Anne, so we have approval by the council to suspend the rules and move to 69C to second read.
Second read ordinance number 269C, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance amending ordinance number 269 passed by the city council on December 15, 2020, entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Adopting a Budget for the Period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, Appropriating Funds and Establishing Salary Schedules for Established Positions.
Okay. We have motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I make a, I make a motion to make a motion that we approve ordinance 269C.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a couple seconds, Councilmember Langford. Any further discussion on ordinance 269C and also open up your comment here in just a moment? No further discussions in the council? Okay, so on second read ordinances, we do take public comment. As we have been doing, if you have a comment on ordinance 269C or the budget amendments that were discussed earlier, please shoot a quick note over to Todd Henderson and he will let me know if there's somebody to speak. All right, so, okay, no public comment, so I'll go ahead and take the vote from the council. This requires a hand raise since we're at an ordinance, so all in favor of approving 269C, please raise your hand. Got one, two, three, four, five, six out of six. The ordinance 269C is passed. All right, thank you very much. Hey Anne, you're back up.
All righty, second read ordinance, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington. Ordinance number 275. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Amending City of Liberty Lake Landscape Regulations Contained in City Development Code.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 275 landscape code.
Okay. By Councilmember Langford? All right, any discussion on ordinance 275? All right, not seeing any. Do we have any public comment on ordinance 275 with regards to the landscape code changes? Todd is indicating that we don't have any. So we'll go ahead and move ahead to the vote for ordinance 275. So all in favor of 275, please raise your hand. Okay, you have six out of six. All right, motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 17, oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead, jumped ahead of Anne, sorry Anne.
Thank you. Second read ordinance, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 176-B. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Amending Ordinance Number 176, passed on July 21, 2009, entitled, Establishing an Independent Salary Commission in Order to Set the Salaries of the City's Elected Officials, Providing for the Appointment and Terms of Commission Members and for Removal of the Same, Establishing Effective Dates for Salary Increases and Decreases Approved by the Commission, Subject to Referendum, Providing for Severability and Establishing Effective Date, and Repealing Ordinances 176 and 176-A in Their Entirety.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Yes.
Did, I, I apologize. On second read ordinances, do we need to open them up for public comment? And did we do that for the landscape code?
Yes.
We did, okay, I'm sorry.
Thanks for checking though.
That's a very good point.
I'm losing my mind, okay, it's fine. It was only like a minute and a half ago.
Well, now that Anne has done such a wonderful job of reading that, I make a motion to we approve 176B.
Okay, this is second, this is member Woodruff. Okay, I know, I know the public probably hasn't seen all of this. Is there, Todd, do you have a copy of the red line for 176B that's in my field sheet? Or I can just walk through it real quick?
I actually have a copy.
Okay, all right, so I'm just a quick description here. So there were some discrepancies that were found in the previous document with regards to the definition of immediate family and relationships with regards to elected positions, commission conditions, this kind of thing. So this has brought to our attention. So in, in section two of ordinance 176B, membership appointment now reads, now will read, the Liberty Lake Salary Commission shall be composed of three members appointed by the mayor with confirmation by the council. Salary commissioners must be residents of the City of Liberty Lake. No member of the commission shall be an immediate family member of the mayor or city council. For purpose of this ordinance, immediate family member means the public official, spouse, registered domestic partner, child, parents, brother and sister, mother and father-in-law, son and daughter-in-law, aunt and uncle, grandparents, children, step relatives, domestic partner relatives in one of these relationships. So the key thing there is this was requiring that each salary commission member could not be related to other persons aside from the elected officials. And so it's been pulled back to just be, you can't be a relative of an elected official, in a nutshell. So any questions or comments on the changes to ordinance 176B? I hear none, I'll open that up, this one up for public comment as well. So if you have any comments, please send Todd Henderson a chat and we will take public comment. Nothing, Todd? Okay, so hearing no public comment, we'll move to vote on second read ordinance 176-B. All in favor, raise your right hand, raise your hand. We have six out of six, motion passed unanimously. All right, and we are no emergency ordinances and so we are up to introduction of upcoming agenda items. Okay, so Mayor, a couple of follow-up from tonight's meeting before I jump into next, June 1st council meeting. So one is, we will include the matrix and the advanced agenda for the following meeting identified in your package for that matrix meeting. The other thing is, I'm going to send you all an email asking if you want the workshop at 6:00 PM to be a continuation of the workshop that we had tonight, or if you wanted to go back to the way it was originally planned, which was rescue, American Rescue Plan and also council priorities. So that whole email will be coming to you tomorrow. And then the other thing is, we'll follow up with staffing level and let you know what our current staffing level is and we can also provide you our staffing level for 2020, so you know how much we grew. On the workshop, so I won't cover the workshop because that remains to be seen, but under the regular session, we have the country business speed limit workshop with Chief Simmons as well as Ben Schmidt, our city engineer. We are asking that you award a contract for phone services for Patera and you confirm the mayor's appointment to a salary commission and that you approve a park and art, excuse me, a park and arts artist agreement. There's a public hearing on Central Valley School District Annocation. And then finally, there's the second read ordinance on the things that we had a first read ordinance on tonight.
Question.
Yes, Mayor Perot.
I have a question about the six o'clock that's coming up in next week. I noticed that what we were talking about, six o'clock with schedules in American Rescue Plan, we only have about 15 minutes. So, so I think what's important is for us to realize, how much, is that sufficient time to talk about that? If not, maybe that should be moved to the seven o'clock. Will that move to seven o'clock? And that allows us six o'clock for, for the discussion of rules and regulations. I just wanted to point that out so when it comes to the council, we get feedback, that we take that into consideration, is how much time will be needed for American Rescue. I think that's very critical as we get information, because that's going to be a big decision that the council is going to be looking at how we're going to spend that money. So that is a council decision. So I think it's important that we treat it fairly.
So what I hear you saying, let me try to summarize it, is continue, have our 6:00 PM be a continuation of today and then move the American Rescue Plan beginning discussion to 7:00 PM.
That's correct, only because I'm assuming that we might spend more time on American Rescue Plan than we have at the six o'clock.
Okay, so if everyone agrees, then I don't have to send an email tomorrow.
Councilmember Fuller first, then.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question on that. Has there been reasonable guidance given?
We've gotten quite a bit.
Reasonable is an interesting word. There has been guidance and I will say, I wouldn't use the word reasonable, I'd use consistent. I can tell you that all of us are getting information from our professional counterparts and organizations and it's all very, very consistent.
Let me rephrase it then. I just want to use our time wisely, so do we have enough information to do that?
Yes.
I think you do, at least in subject areas, I guess the mayor was saying, businesses, infrastructure.
Uh, Councilmember Porter from the Mayor Perot.
Councilmember Fuller asked one of my questions. My other question is, will we get that in our package? So we can. I will send it down tomorrow because I have it now and, okay, great. I can send it to you tomorrow. And again, in fact, I think there's a lot of flexibility and I think it was written without a lot of flexibility. Thank you.
Perot, Tim?
With that in mind, because there is so much flexibility there and we don't actually know exactly what we can do, I would recommend for all the council elected officials to be very cautionary of not getting involved with citizens on input on stuff we don't even know yet. I think it would be a good idea that we wait on that until we have a better idea. Because if we start getting citizens questions, it puts us in a precarious situation to be giving them basically a paint that we're assuming.
Councilmember Fuller.
Help me understand maybe the timeline of how long we have to work with this American Rescue Plan.
So we're supposed to be getting the first half in June or July, correct?
I think it's this month.
Oh, they say July, like first, and then we have, and then we'll get the second half next year, but we have till sometime in 2024 to spend it.
December 31, 2024. So you have that much time to spend these dollars. Is that include what we get this month?
Correct, yeah.
Reason I ask a question, I just feel like we're so close to wrapping up resolution 12. Knock it out and then move on. But if we are under a time crunch, then say it.
I, I think it's important to get it, get it started. We do have businesses who, who, you know, need some assistance. We have nonprofits who are down in fundraising, there's so many, and you know, there's things that we need at the city level. We saw tonight as we started off our technology issues, right? And it's looking like we can probably, is that my tinnitus or do you have it here? Okay, I've got a really big ring in my ear, I apologize. We can hopefully start putting some of those dollars to use here as well.
Just that offer, I think maybe we begin to, so what I'm hearing is, let's stay the course for the 6:00 PM with the workshop that we had today and try to get that, that maybe have the very first discussion on the American Recovery Act at 7:00 PM. But it could very well be a full workshop. Because I think it's going to intermingle with your priorities for 2022. And therefore, similar to what we did for the Trailhead subject, maybe you should have something on the American Rescue.
the American Rescue Plan, um, for this summer, as, because that'll help inform the budget that's gonna be put together for next year. So it, I don't, it, it could be a very long, it could be longer than just the council meeting.
Yeah, I think it's good to get the conversation going and, and discuss what, what we know now and get some ideas going.
So I just really feel it's important that the council's gonna make the decision where this 2.3 million dollars is going, and we do it systematically and not knee-jerk reaction to say, oh, we need to do this immediately, let's look at exactly what we want to get accomplished, okay? And so we can be the most effective for our citizens for the money that we're being given.
All right. I closed my folder.
Still sticking with the plan then?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing, I'm not hearing any objection to the way I described it, so I, you will not be getting an email from me tomorrow. Anne, we'll stay with the workshop that we had today, and then we'll move the American Rescue Plan to the second.
Yep.
And let you object. See anybody else?
Just gonna stretch it out.
Well, we'll try to keep, put a time, we'll put a time limit on 30 to 40 minutes. Okay, um, we have opportunity for the next set of citizen comments, so, again, we open it up to the public to send Todd a chat and, um, share any public comments regards to what's going on. Todd, do you have anybody?
Yeah, Tim Olson.
Tim Olson, you're up.
Thank you, Council, I just want to mention that, uh, I was honored to be able to listen in to the city council regarding Trailhead project. I was impressed with how things were handled and the assistance that came forward. I was proud to be a citizen, and I was really interested in how you guys thought through that whole process, and I just want to mention that, a lot of times, we don't get to hear that, and I just want to say how much I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the plan that we're headed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else, Todd? He's checking. Nope, okay, so it sounds like we don't have any other comments? If there's no other business, adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody, see you at the next meeting.
Introduction business.